Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting from July 27. We're going to start a little bit late tonight, just getting a little organized here. I'll ask if anybody here in the audience is recording this meeting. Being none, we'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any public comment tonight on a sheet in front of me. Is there anybody in the audience for public comment? Okay, we'll move on. We have a presentation tonight and public hearings. Under the first, we have the public hearing on the Open Space Committee on South Hold Road. And what I'll do is I will entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
Before I do, before I... Excuse me, before I do, you have a quorum from the Open Space Committee?
We do.
I will ask that you open your meeting.
Is there a motion to open? I'm going to open our meeting. I'm just going to call our meeting to order. Your motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion for opening the hearing.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing of the Open Space Committee jointly with the Open Space Committee on South Hold Road land use for recommendations as it relates to borrowing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Tonight, we're hoping to put a little bit more discussion to what we have with the South Hold Road. The Open Space Committee has been working at this and brought back some recommendations to us, but I'd like to hear from the board, either board, to see if there's any comments, questions, before we get into asking the public of any comments they'd like to make. Okay. Yes, this is good, Richard.
Well, I'll just say that in our packet, we do have the letter with the recommendation from the Open Space Committee, and I did take the opportunity to view the meeting and thank them for the work that they did. And I fully support their recommendation of recommending municipal use for the next 10 years, but not specifying what that municipal use be, because we don't know what it would be in five years, seven years, eight years, 10 years.
Okay, I have that letter in front of me also. And before I get into that, thank you for bringing that forward. Anything from the town manager regarding this property? Has there been any updates? Has there been any comments made? Any calls?
Through the chair, nothing's been received from our office.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to mention that during the last... the office hours before the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I did meet with a resident from that area who just wanted to meet with the selectmen and let us know that he would like us to consider keeping it as open space, no commercial use whatsoever, and wanted to share those... asked me to share those thoughts with the rest of the board.
Okay.
And he is directly, in the direct proximity of that property.
Ms. Simonean.
Yeah, since the members are here, or most of the members, I'm just wondering if I could get a little more clarification on specifically what they're recommending here? This, for 10 years, we're not going to use it for anything?
Okay.
Is that basically what the intent is?
In order to follow up with your... an answer to that, I'd like... we have a... all of us should have a copy of the letter in our packets. And it's addressed to me, the chairman, received on the 22nd, but it was dated on July 17 of 2015. It says, "Dear Mr. Holstrom, please be advised that at its meeting on July 13, 2015, the Open Space Committee voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that the entire town-owned property on South Hold Road be bonded for municipal use over the next 10 years, specifically for passive recreation. In addition, the committee voted to request that the Board of Selectmen allow the Open Space Committee the opportunity to present passive recreational use ideas at a later date. We would like to thank the residents of Auburn who took the time to participate in this process, either by attending our meetings and/or your public hearings," meaning the board, "or by submitting a written comment regarding possible uses for this site. As we move forward with our work, we encourage members of our community to attend our meetings to offer input on specific town-owned open parcels as they come up for discussion. As always, should the Board of Selectmen have any questions or need for any additional information from the committee, please feel free to contact us at any time, very truly yours, Ann L. Western, Chairperson." And now I guess I will turn this over to Ms. Weston and maybe address your question, Mr. Simonean.
Maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Simonean and all of the board members. It was our understanding from the information provided by the town manager and the Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Kastenovich, that even if the property were bonded for a 10-year period all for municipal use, you could still utilize it during that 10-year period for town-related uses. Am I correct? So it was our understanding that the uses we're talking about are all things relative to passive recreation that we wanted to bring forward later. We have, just to give you some idea, with things we've all talked about already, the walking trails, the hiking trails, the biking trails, a possible dog park, those kinds of things. Somebody had brought up the idea of disc golf. I'm not real familiar with that, but some of my board members are familiar. It's a pretty passive use, from what I understand. And not that this is particularly passive recreation, but we did have Mr. Blumquist from the Cemetery and Parks Division into our last meeting to talk to us about the need for a cemetery at some point in the future. It's not right now. Probably within the next 30 years, we'll be needing one, but certainly in the interim period, it's something to look at, and maybe we'd be utilizing the property for something else during that time. So those are just, you know, just some ideas of things that we had come up with. We had a lot of other uses on our list, but at the last meeting, we sort of pared it down, and the majority of the committee kind of pretty much wanted to stick to passive recreation uses for municipal... for the municipal environment. So given that, you know, my initial feeling was, I didn't want it to sit there for 10 years either. You know, it's a lot of money to sit. But given that we had been advised by the administration that it would still be able to be utilized for town purposes during that 10-year period, I guess I could, you know, we felt pretty comfortable with that.
Simonean.
Yeah, then I'd like a clarification of what town purposes are, because is it going to be available for public use during that time? I don't want... I don't want this to turn into another situation, you know... There's hundreds of people from Auburn over the years that have told me they, for generations, have hiked the area up on the old trash dump, up on the Crawl Hill, and it's been closed off for years now because of one stupid person. And all of that recreation land that the public used to use is no longer available to them. So if we bond this for 10 years and say it's for municipal use, what, if anything, can the public do down there? Because I don't want to see that happen, where for 10 years, we just sit on this and we've got a place where people can go, where they don't have to walk on the streets, and basically they can't use it. So I'd like a clarification on that specific, when we talk about town use or municipal use, what we're talking about there.
Well, if I may interject, Mr. Simonean, I think that what they've brought to us is recommending that just town use for the next 10 years, but nothing specific has been decided on.
Passive recreation uses.
Yes, passive recreation, and it's...
Listen, let's make this simple. Can the public use it or not during that time? I don't want to dance around this. I don't want to have back and forth, I think this, I think that. Yes or no? Can the public use it during the 10 years if we do this?
Mr. Simonean, can I just ask the town manager if we can have a little...
Sure, I just want an answer, that's all.
Yeah. Is there any specifics to rules, regulations about what we can use this as passive recreation, or is it just open? We can... we're not going to develop the space. It's going to be used for... it'll be maintained as property as it is. I mean, it'll be cut, it'll be trimmed, it'll be taken care of. That was something that was discussed at one point, but also with walking trails and that type of thing. So it's nothing we can develop and nothing we can build on right now. It's just something that, if you want to use the property, we can use the property, and that's my understanding.
Through the chair, correct. A municipal use as defined by the bond council and our financial advisors is any municipal use, whether it be a municipal building, or recreation, or walking. Those are all municipal use, and municipal use generally is open to the public. It depends on what the use is. I think the difference between passive recreation and active recreation is something that has not yet been decided as to what the board or the committee wants to do. They are recommending right now, for the 10 years, to look at passive recreation, but they're also asking to come back with ideas at a later date. For the purposes of town administration, we just need to know if it's going to be municipal or non-municipal. And that does not necessarily mean public use or not public use. I can't think of any municipal purposes where the public wouldn't be using it. I don't think... My understanding is that the Board of Selectmen is looking for a recommendation from the Open Space Committee, and then the Board of Selectmen would make the decision as to how to go forward. So the Open Space Committee's had several hearings...
We're simply advisory.
Yeah, and you've had several hearings.
And that's fine. I'm just trying to clarify. I'm not impugning the recommendation in any way, shape, or form. I just want to make sure. And we had hundreds of people come up here in the fall and talk about what they'd like to see done with that, and it's been echoed in some of the emails and other things. So I don't want this to be 10 years where the public can't use this. And also, I don't want to waste resources where there's, you know, people who live up there and they're making phone calls to the Auburn PD every time they see someone walking down there going, "Hey, nobody's supposed to be out there," and, you know, and that's a waste of the Auburn PD's time and resources. So I don't want to close it off for 10 years to the public. 10 years is a long time.
Okay.
So if the public can't use it 10 years, I got a huge problem with that.
Ms. Goodrich.
So just to follow up on Mr. Simonean's comments, and he referenced the old landfill. So simply put, is it that if we designate this as... if we take a vote tonight to bond it for a 10-year municipal use, is it the town's intention to put no trespassing signs up there and prohibit residents from using that property now until it's determined what its use will be? Correct?
Also, on the same note, if we bond it for municipal use and someone's out there and gets hurt, what's our liability? So, you know, there's... I want to make sure that everything is covered here, and it's not just a, well, I think this, I think that. I want to see something that says definitively yes or no.
I'm not aware of any... what the liability issues are. I don't know anything about that.
What does the law say?
I'm not sure about what the law is saying.
Well, our town administration is right here.
Thank you. I will ask, and when I get that... I'm going to finish what I've got to say here first. But I think what we're talking about right now is a recommendation from the Open Space Committee for passive recreation. That means no development of the property. It's just to go up and use the land for walking trails, walk your dogs, even, you know, what they were talking about, this disc...
Disc golf.
Disc golf, or whatever. If it's open space, they can go up and they can use it. We're not going to... we're not going to tie it down to not being able to use it. We just have to make the recommendation tonight if we want to do that, to use that property like that. And I will turn it over to the town administration.
It's not that simple. It isn't that simple. I appreciate the recommendation, but we can sit here and say, "Yeah, we're not going to put up no trespassing signs. We're not going to do this. The public can use it." What does the law say? That's what I want to know, because we can say that all night long, and then tomorrow, someone reads a law and says, "Yeah, it's bonded for municipal use. The public can't be out there in any way, shape, or form," and now we're in a whole different issue. We just voted without all the facts in front of us. I appreciate the recommendation. I just want to know what the law says.
Thank you. Can I turn it over to the town manager?
Through the chair. I'll answer some of it. Let me just say, I think the conversation's gone a little off of where we're looking to be.
Thank you.
I think it is as simple, right now anyway, as saying that you want to use this for municipal purposes or non-municipal purposes, for purposes of us taking a bond. What the Board of Selectmen wants to recommend for the use of that property moving forward does not need to be decided this evening. That needs to be decided at some point. As far as the access by the public, the only time, my understanding, that anyone would put up any signs is if there was a physical danger or something that we had to protect, such as the landfill, because it was under a DEP ruling. So we have to be cautious about the activity on the landfill, and there were some concerns up there for some public safety issues. If there's a public safety issue and our fire chief, police chief, or DPW recommend we have a public safety issue, parts of it would have to be posted. That's a public safety issue. Nothing like that's been brought to our attention at all. I think what we're trying to decide here is a municipal use, whether it be active recreation, passive recreation, a potential building in the future, you just need to decide as a board, based on the recommendations that you've heard from the public and from the committee, whether you're going to use it for any one of those things, all of which can be decided at a later date, including whether you want to forbid access to the public. That's not what we're... we're not forbidding access to the public at all. If it's public land, it is accessible by the public unless it is so posted for public safety purposes.
Thank you. Ms. Simonean.
I understand what we're voting on. I realize we're not saying we're going to use it for this, we're going to use it for that. What I'm asking is, if it's designated by this board for municipal use, does that... do we definitively know that allows the public to be on there anytime they want?
We... Mr. Simonean, right now, we have town land that residents are allowed to be on at any time, and the question has never come up about liability issues, about safety factors, safety issues on any piece of property, whether it be South Hold Road, whether it be the Auburn High School fields, the middle school fields. There has been nothing said that residents cannot be using those properties.
Actually, there is. There is. And again, I go back to the old landfill. I... listen, I've read tons on this. I talked to the DEP, I talked to EPA, I talked to a ton of people about this, and they were very clear. The only thing that was danger was the... potential damage to the cap and the possibility that there may, even though after almost 30 years, there's very little chance of any methane release, but those could easily have been roped off. Instead of just roping off the areas that could compromise the cap or that, the town decided to just basically say, "No one can go up there for any reason whatsoever," blocking off tons of recreational area that people used to use. So if we designate this as municipal land, there's nothing to stop the town from doing that. Some knucklehead could go out there one night, just like they did whatever it was, eight or nine years ago, on a four-wheeler, even though no motorized vehicles, didn't matter, didn't stop them. They went up there, crashed there, and there was an issue with that. So someone could do the same thing, and we could turn around and go, "Yeah, you know what? No one can be out there anymore because everyone's going to get hurt." Doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't know what the law says. Nobody else seems to. I'm not going to support it. I appreciate the recommendation and the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question in the back. Mr. Mahah, please.
Governor Mahah.
Would you please recognize...
Fort Stonebridge Drive.
Thank you.
I promised my wife I wouldn't talk tonight. I just can't help myself. I think in terms of liability, it's already there. You own it. It's really that simple. I told my wife, "If I ever fall down the ad, push me out the back, get me on the town property, then soon." That's the fact of the life that you're dealing with right now. You own it. You've got the liability. So that should be set aside. I think what's happened here, and I think everybody's kind of lost sight, and I kind of really felt bad for the Open Space Committee. They were given a task to make a determination of use, with this whole bond issue overhanging them. And they had a very short timetable, and they opened up the process, and they really worked hard at it. And I think the final conclusion was, in that short time period, for municipal use. What's that really mean? And I don't think people really realize, you decide, the selectmen, what to do with it. You have to take care of it, but you really haven't decided what to do with it, other than not break it up and sell it off, because then you would need a different component for your bonding. Municipal use, funding, financing, based on that, is really very simple, for the town to use. You can decide whether it's going to be a walking trail, a bike trail, or a frisbee golf, but you're really... it's really that simple. Do you want to break it up and sell it off? Don't bond it for municipal use. If you want to see the town maintain it and use it for something to the benefit of the citizens, then you should go for municipal use. But you already have the liability right now, and I'm sure you're well insured, but that's kind of the facts of the matter right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mahah. Ask Mr. Kastenovich to address this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Mahah already spoke of the issue. Town-owned land, our residents would be covered. They're covered at our parks, they're covered in any open space that may exist that's town-owned land. For instance, the old property up on Prospect Street, that was originally designated for the high school. We have 40-plus acres up there. People do walk that property. It is insured. We are covered. There's no issue with that. In terms of the landfill, there are other issues that we need to, I guess, bring up as a result of why it's not being used. There's also a firing range up there that has an impact on the safety of our residents if they should walk the property. That's used from time to time by our Auburn Police Department. It does present a problem for those individuals that may decide to walk the landfill. There's also expensive communication equipment up at the landfill that cannot be tampered with. We made a major investment, hundreds of thousands of dollars, so our public safety officials can communicate town-wide without any drop zones. That has to be safeguarded. That's another reason why individuals are not allowed to walk the property up there.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes no sense. It absolutely makes no sense. What is to stop it? While we're sitting here right now...
Excuse me, Mr. Simonean. Through the chair, if you would please...
Ken, I'm so tired of you interrupting me every time I talk. It's really getting old.
I'm sorry. This is the Board of Selectmen. This is my meeting, and I will run it the way I see fit.
Okay, you don't do it to anybody else.
Ms. Simonean, if you've got some comments, please address them through the chair.
So through the chair, it doesn't make any sense, because there's nothing to stop anyone right now, while we're all sitting here, from walking up there and tampering with communication equipment. There's no guard up there. I've been up there. And as far as other towns have... other towns have shooting ranges or other things like that, and they're posted appropriately as they're required to be. So this... whatever.
I think what we've done here is we've discussed a little bit about what we'd want to do. We've got a recommendation from the Open Space Committee about passive recreation. Mr. Carpenter, I'll... please.
I would just like to make a motion that we close the hearing.
Motion been made, and second is there any discussion on closing the hearing? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed. We never asked the rest of the public if they wanted to speak, but...
It's a vote. The meeting is... the hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion on what we have tonight. I would actually... would like to hear before that is done, on the bond issue, what the... we've received some information from Mr. Kastenovich, the CFO, on what the debt service schedule is going to be for the 10-year level, and I wish he would address that before we actually make a motion on a recommendation tonight. Would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had presented this scenario several months ago when the board was considering whether or not to vote its right of first refusal. This debt and interest level debt service schedule is for a 10-year period at a current rate of about 2%. As you can see, it tries to maintain a level debt payment for the periods beginning in year one and year 10. Total debt and interest payments range in the vicinity of about $315,000 per year each year. That would commence once we go to market with an interest payment at the six-month mark, and annual payments on the anniversary date of the bond issue. If we go the short-term route, just for year one only, let me just tell you, because the board has not made a decision yet on that, the current bond issue does classify this as a ban. Based upon what action it may take tonight, we are prepared to discuss the matter with our financial advisors and bond council, whether or not we can now change the official statement to reflect a long-term borrowing instead of a short-term borrowing. But for purposes of going to market in September, we have now classified this as a ban for a period of one year, and we estimate that the annual interest on that one-year ban, at a current rate of about 1%, would be about $28,650. That is not going to change this level debt service. That may just delay it by one year, Mr. Chairman. But that lays out the financial options under a short-term borrowing for one year with a 10-year bond issue in September of '17.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Ms. Simonean.
I'm not going to support this for some of the reasons I stated, and I also think that bonding it for 10 years is unnecessary cost to the residents. Secondly, I don't think it would have been too difficult for the town to give us a preliminary report. We had so many people who came up here, emailed us, talked to us about using part of that land for walking trails. It's something that the town has been begging for, for quite some time. There's a large amount of people who bike, who walk, who run. I would give them a safe place to do it. We could have bonded... we could have found out, basically, how much land we would need to do that. We could have bonded that for a short period of time, bonded the rest for 10 years for municipal use, and then some time in the next 10 years, gone forward with building that park for the residents who voiced a majority opinion that they wanted something like that. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen. That's a shame.
Yes. The town manager, Mr. Jacob, please.
Through the chair, I just want to be clear. The town administration's provided every information that this board has asked us for with regard to this issue since September of 2014. We've provided you with reports. We've provided you with financial analysis. We've provided you with five or six different alternatives for the use of the land, for the cost of the development, for the cost of maintaining it as open space. We are happy to provide additional information, should the board request it. It's not a problem. We're happy to. If the board would like to take a vote, that you feel you have... you're missing something, please tell us, but we have not been asked to provide anything that's missing at this point. So everything this board has asked us for, everything the Open Space Committee has asked the town administration for, we have come forward and we have provided it. And that includes several different types of debt schedules, since, I'm going to say, that goes back to probably December or January. So please, I want to respond by saying, if there is something, Ms. Simonean, you said that we haven't provided you with, what is that and what can we provide?
It was brought up several times. So there wasn't an official vote, but there certainly could have been a report on how much land would have been needed for trails. It was discussed so many times, and I specifically asked if we could have something like that. We never got it. I mean, we don't... we shouldn't have to vote on every little report that, you know, something like that. When the majority of the people in the town come up here and say that that's what they want, I mean, now we're kind of nitpicking.
Mr. Carpenter.
Well, I think we're off on a tangent to some extent, because by doing this for municipal use, first of all, we went out for a grant for a walking trail, which is specified for up there. So that is in the works currently. When they're saying municipal use, if someone comes forward and says, "We want a dog park, we can do that in the 10 years." If somebody wants a jogging trail, a bike trail, we can do that under the municipal use. So these are not being cut off. use, first of all, we went out for a grant for a walking trail, which is specified for up there. So that is in the works currently. When they're saying municipal use, if someone comes forward and says, "We want a dog park", we can do that in the ten years. If somebody wants a jogging trail, a bike trail, we can do that under the municipal use. So these are not being cut off. And the other thing is, we don't want to lose sight that Southhold Road is just one property that we own. We have other properties. Other people in town may want a walking trail in their neighborhood, they may want a biking trail in their neighborhood. The committee has had very little time to even really work on their charge, which is unfortunate, even though they've done a great job with the work that they've done to this day. We really need to remember that we have other parcels. This is simply for the bond, we're not closing any avenue off for anything other than for a commercial use, whether that be selling land for residential, anything else. So this property is still going, and is still available for that type of design, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Simone.
And the counterpoint to that is, for six or seven years, people could passively go up there and walk and be used to using it, and the town could say, "Hey, no more using the land, we're putting a building up there." Right? So it's not going to be designated for something that a lot, a majority of the people who came up here asked for.
Mr. Simone, I'd like to make a correction on what you did say, that the town-
Am I going to be able to finish any thought without you jumping in and cutting me off?
I want you to be, understand that the town will not be building anything up there.
I would like you to understand, I'd like you to give me the same courtesy that I give you. I allow you to finish your statements, that's three times tonight at least.
Thank you, Mr. Simone. I understand that you were saying that the town would build, some municipal building up there, there will be no building up there. If this vote goes forward, it'll be passive recreation only. Is there any further comments or questions? Motion been made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
It's a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to lighten it up a bit, and just recommend that the town manager put a camera pointed at Mr. Maher's property in case we see Mrs. Maher rolling him down the hill. We will be looking for a rolling body down the hill.
Okay, okay.
You haven't taken a vote yet.
Okay.
You're going to have the DPW first, and then you're going to-
Do we want to adjourn? I make a motion to, after they close their meeting, to adjourn so that we can wrap up.
Okay. Yeah, I will, we've taken the vote on your meeting tonight, and I thank you very much for your time and your input, and you will be having further meetings.
We will. We're going to start, we've been meeting almost every week since June eighth.
Okay.
We're going to go back to first and third Mondays, seven o'clock, hopefully in the planning board room if it's available. But as long as the majority of the committee concurs, I think our next meeting is going to be on the third Monday in August, which would be August seventeenth, seven o'clock. I think we're going to give ourselves a break this coming Monday, so.
Thank you.
Anyways, I want to thank you, and thank you all for your time. And so with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn our meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we have a brief recess to allow the members to-
Second.
All are in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again, thank you very much.
Mark, you're good.
At seven, at seven?
Seven, yes.
Did you answer seven?
Okay. The next we have on our agenda is, I'm going to ask DPW Director Bill Coyle, we had requested a report on the fields maintained by the DPW and the Parks Division, so, Mr. Coyle, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you stated, the town manager had requested that I prepare an update on the maintenance of the town fields, and also the use of the town of Auburn recreational fields. Also with me this evening is Wayne Blumquist, the Parks and Cemetery Superintendent, Kristin Pappas, the Director of Recreation and Culture, and Kenny Fairbanks, who is the Highway Superintendent and the former Park Superintendent. So I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'll go through, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or even as I go through the presentation, if you have any questions specific to any slide, feel free to jump in. Relative to staffing, the Department of Public Works Parks Division consists of three full-time employees and one full-time superintendent who also serves as the cemetery superintendent. During the months of May through August, and really they should probably say June through August, we have four seasonal employees who are brought on to help with the field maintenance. And sometimes the kids, because they're typically older teenagers, they'll end up working until middle of August. So there's a short window that we have the additional four employees help with the maintenance of these fields. My understanding that approximately twenty-five years ago, the staff consisted of three full-time employees and ten to twelve seasonal employees. So as you can see, the Parks Division is doing more with less staff, significantly less staff, actually. Responsibilities, the Parks Division is not only responsible for the maintenance of all the parks in town, but also maintains the grounds at all town facilities, including all the schools, all the grass at the dams, all the grass medians, and all the islands. The following is a list of facilities maintained by this department, which consist of approximately seventy-five acres of land maintained on a weekly basis. In addition to these seventy-five acres of the facilities I'm about to show you, they also maintain, as was discussed earlier, the landfill, which is over twenty acres of land, and now the newly acquired Southhold Land Property, which I believe is somewhere around forty acres of land, which we've just completed mowing the majority of that property in the past week. The town owned properties consist of the athletic fields, I'll read through them quickly. I think most people are aware of them, but I think it is worth going through them just to appreciate the extent of the fields that are maintained by this small division within the DPW. The athletic fields, the Pappas Complex, which in itself is fairly massive and takes five DPW employees an entire day just to maintain that parcel, that facility. Lemansky Park, which is also very large, softball field, the baseball field, the all-purpose field, the all-purpose field within the track, Franklin Park, Holstrom Court, Randall School, which will, is the location, obviously, of the new middle school, which is bringing on additional fields, which will also be maintained by this department. Town facilities, Auburn Youth and Family Service Grounds, the Boy Street Taunt Lot, the Camp Gleason and Fire Station grounds, Guarded Park, the library grounds, the police station, the town hall, the senior center, and all the schools, which we're all familiar with, so I won't read them off to you. All of the dams, again, Eddie Pond Dam, Pondville Pond Dam, and the boat ramp at Eddie Pond as well. All of the Veterans Memorial Corridor Islands at Prospect Street, Route twelve and twenty at Water Street, with the exception of Church Street, which is maintained by the Water Department. And then all of the islands and medians that are listed before you, and again, I won't read all of them, but you can see it's an extensive list. The athletic fields, one day, about two weeks ago, I asked Kenny Fairbanks to take a ride and just take pictures of all the fields on one given day. So this was about two weeks ago. Some of the fields, like the Auburn Middle School, you can see had just been recently mowed. Brimma School Field had not, but you can see it's in excellent condition. And I think it's worth noting, too, as part of this report that I prepared, I did speak to all of the league presidents, and the Little League President indicated that the fields, he felt, were in excellent condition. The softball president echoed the same, and the soccer field president, or soccer president, also said he thought the fields were in good condition. Did have some comments, which I'll touch upon as I move forward. The Franklin Field, which the Little League actually had donated generously, I believe, last year to put sod in the infield. So obviously, that field is in excellent shape and tends to be somewhat wet over there, so although that's not always beneficial for play, can be beneficial for green ball fields. Holstrom Court Field, which is somewhat underutilized, I think because of the parking situation. So it's a field that is not always being used, so as we talk about future needs, you know, whether or not improvements could be done to other fields, there are fields out there that are probably what the leagues would consider less desirable than others, so these fields, such as Holstrom Court, would be used less frequently. Julia Bancroft softball, primarily used the softball, but I think also soccer. Mary D. Stone, which is all-purpose field, I think primarily for soccer as well. I believe last year, my understanding is that had very little use, and was actually able to rest last year. Lemansky Park softball field, and I believe I'm missing the photo of the baseball field, but obviously there's a baseball field there as well, and then the soccer field within the track. And then the Auburn High School, both football field, baseball field, both artificial turf fields, which we have to, we sweep those fields on a regular basis to try, to keep those maintained. The Auburn High School softball field, which we aerated a few weeks ago, the Auburn High School all-purpose field, again, an artificial turf field, the Pappas Recreation Complex, the Kamasi Field, again, turf, artificial turf, the Pappas softball field, which is a grass field. The Fuller Field on the left is a grass field as well, and then the Pappas Recreation Complex, the Riley Pappas Pavilion, which we use primarily for seating for the concerts, but is actually designed as a smaller soccer field if needed. We tend to try to minimize the use of that area for obvious reasons, where we use it for the concerts, we want to try to keep that in the best possible condition that we can. So that is used probably very little for soccer purposes currently. And then next year, I guess a brief preview of the new middle school on the left, is the new football field, soccer field, and I guess overall all-purpose field as well, and the new middle school all-purpose field, which is, which is a grass field. Now, these are two additional fields that this department will also be maintaining as well. Field usage, each year, the DPW meets with all the league presidents, and last year, I believe we met in December, plus or minus. We meet early with them, we meet with the president of the baseball league, softball league, and also with the, we also discuss all the field requirements with the soccer presidents as well. And we sit down and we go over their needs for the upcoming season. They give us what they need for field usage. We have that online, it's available, on the left is a sample of just one day of time. You can see it's the Kamasi Field, Fuller Field, Pappas Field, and then the soccer field. So it's all identified online, what time is scheduled and booked for all the town fields. The town, obviously, their needs are met before anybody else who wants to rent the fields are allowed to use and rent those fields. And on the right, the schedule on the left is strictly for the Pappas recreational facility. The one on the right, Kristin Pappas prepares that particular schedule, and that is all of the smaller fields in town, you know, the Brimma School, the current middle school grass field in the back, Mary D., Packard Chog, any of the other school fields that we are in control of scheduling. The high school, actually, their staff provides the schedules for the high school fields, and also the new middle school, I believe the school department will be also doing the scheduling for those fields as well. So those, the high school and new middle school are handled through the school department. Field maintenance and improvements, modifications, improvements can always be made in the coming years relative to the field conditions and usage. We can try to do more aeration, seeding. We're just finishing the dugouts at the Fuller Field up at the Pappas Facility. The DPW Facilities Division, I believe, has just finished the last dugout. We do have slated two additional dugouts at Lemansky for replacement as well. Additional fencing, top dressing, sod cutting, improvements with probably the current irrigation, maintaining that, lime fertilization, and additional backstops and infield play areas if necessary. Going back to the scheduling, I did want to make a point that what we do is, once we do meet with the town leagues, we will then meet with the AAU organization for their baseball schedule needs, and we also meet with, or discuss any of the needs for any of the soccer leagues. And we do get quite a demand for private soccer teams to use the soccer field at Pappas, so, and we have found it to be beneficial relative to generating an income for the town on that side of it. So it does help us to work with the leagues and make sure that when they give us a schedule of when they're going to use those fields, that they're truly going to be using those fields, because if they just block out an entire day and they use one hour, well, that's time that we've given up, that we could have had the AAU baseball teams utilizing those fields, and they have to have a permit if they want to guarantee the use of that field. So there's a fee associated with that. So that's income that we do generate for that field usage. And the leagues have worked very well with us and tried to cooperate in order to allow us to utilize the fields as much as we can. Long-term needs, I know that this original request had come up when you were discussing the Southhold land. I can say that, looking at the current property, or the fields that we have, the additional fields could be constructed on existing town owned land. And the slide to your right is the current Pappas Facility. If you look to the top right of that slide, you can see the two, the three, two baseball fields, the soccer field, and the softball field, and the Performance Pavilion, and then towards the bottom of that slide are the existing cornfields that exist. These are immediately adjacent to the Pappas Facility. There's a total of eighty acres, I believe, on this site. We're utilizing probably twenty acres now, and there's probably twenty to thirty acres that could potentially be used in the future. I think that that might be something that, obviously, there's other town owned land, and that's what the Open Space Committee's task is, is looking at what areas could be utilized. And this is one that jumps out at me that has potential, I think, many years down the road. I think currently, what we have facilities should meet the community's needs for the next five to ten years, so, and I'll continue with, depending on the needs of the community. With the new middle field, new middle school fields becoming available, the existing fields with some modifications, the overall use should serve our community for the next five to ten years. And I'd say that that may even be more than five to ten years. In conclusion, the Parks Division staff do a great job maintaining the town's fields, and we strive to have the best recreational facilities in the region. Improvements can always be made, and we are happy to receive comments and suggestions on how to achieve our goal. With that, I can tell you that, in particular today, I drove some of the fields with Wayne Blumquist and Kenny Fairbanks. We've identified some areas that could use improvements. I think what was specifically mentioned by the soccer president was Packard Chog School. There are areas there that we could mow and seed and try to level off. We'd obviously have to coordinate that with the soccer league, and also with the school department to make sure, because obviously that's where they have their recess, to make sure that we don't fence off an area that they need, and we try to work with them. I don't think we'd have to rest that entire field. I think there's spot areas that could use some maintenance, and obviously, there's always improvements that can be made. I think when you look around to other communities, I like to think that Auburn's facilities are probably some of the best facilities in the area. But be happy to answer any questions or comments you might have, or questions for improvements that we can do.
Mr. Carpenter.
Steve had his hands up first, Mr. Chairman.
Karen, go ahead.
Thank you for this, Bill. The one thing missing is the solution. You've identified your resources, you've identified the fact that we have growing problems as far as staffing resources to take care of fields. We also had quite a few people here who want something other than ball fields, other than, so they want other recreation. And we did just spend three million dollars to buy Southhold Road. So that's why last year, I spoke to the town manager and I spoke with you about maintenance. Now, as you know, we had a dumping issue up there, and I don't want to see that go back to forest land, which will basically defeat the whole purpose, and from what I'm told from experts, that can happen very quickly. So I'd like to see, if we had ten to twelve people, what is the cost of ten to twelve students for a period of eight weeks to assist with, if that's even part of the solution?
Well, and just in response to that, you know, if there's a problem that exists, I agree, we need to identify a solution. I'm not necessarily saying that there is a problem. I do think, obviously, doing more with less is always a challenge. I think that the staff that we have, they're able to keep up with the mowing and the weed whacking. The aeration gets to be a little bit difficult. I think that's something that we can, we aerated the, some of the fields, but something that we could work on improving. Obviously, additional seasonal help would make things easier, and it's something, you know, that, you know, I've had some discussions with the town manager and the assistant town manager, potentially for next year, what we might be able to do for additional seasonal staff. So if we did have additional seasonal staff, I don't think we need to go to the number that the ten to twelve they had in the past. You know, I think with the current staff that we have, they're able to keep up with a lot of it. Having a few more people would allow us to do more and maintain. I believe the facilities are being maintained currently, but there's always room for improvement. When I look at Holstrom Court today, you know, the whole, the infield is growing in with grass, but as, what I'm hearing, it's really not used much right now for baseball. It'd probably be better served for soccer, because it's mostly grass. I think that we're maintaining it. Again, there's always room for improvement. If we did have additional staff, we could improve upon what we have already.
Mr. Simone.
I actually had a question and comment about the field over at Holstrom Court, because I know we used it a few times this summer since, because like you said, it's almost never used. And I think, it seems like it would be tricky, because you've got a house on one side and the train tracks on the other, of the existing parking, which I'm sure presents an issue, but it seems like some- an issue. But it seems like some of what now is the fall territory along the right-field line, possibly the fence could be moved back and additional parking could be created. I look at it from the standpoint of the comments that you make. I know what it costs roughly for maintaining the field. It's your time. It's your resources. It's, and you have to, you have to maintain a field that's barely being used. So I'm just looking at it as, possibly looking at a way to maybe invest a little bit to get that field used more, since it is there. To continue to maintain it when it's barely used at all doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but I would hate to see it go away at the same time, because it is a space that could be utilized, continue to be utilized for recreation. So I realize there's problems, but, you know, hopefully, we can do that, figure out a way to, and I know the parking is an issue. I think you fit maybe five cars in there at the most, six.
Right.
Because of that issue. Just one thing that Mr. Carpenter brought up, and I know you said you were having discussions with the town meeting to whatever possible part of that solution is. I think it is a great idea, if we can reach out to, you know, maybe some of the juniors and seniors who would be interested in some kind of, like, possibly an internship, co-op type of thing, maybe, you know, that would be a great resource that would also give some experience if it's something, you know, part of that solution. I think there's kids out there that would love that. So, you know, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, as a possibility, so.
Through the chair, we do advertise in the spring for part-time seasonal help, and we get a decent turnout of applicants. I wouldn't say a tremendous, maybe a dozen, maybe a dozen applicants, and we hire typically four of those 12 that we get. The problem that we do tend to have is that some of the work that needs to be done, these seasonal employees start usually around June, when they get out of school, depending on if they're college kids or high school age. And then, in particular, we've already, we lost one so far this year who had another opportunity, and then we have two more, one's looking to become a police officer, and I believe he has a potential offer, and then I believe another seasonal. So we can lose them earlier, and I think we're going to be down to probably two, one or two seasonal within the next few weeks. So then, the difficulty that we have is, the time to do the aeration and the seeding is in the fall. And now I'm down to my three full-time employees maintaining all of the land that we had mentioned, so, and now the leaves are falling. So now you have to, now collect the leaves. So, we are going to try to, you know, we can meet with the soccer president in baseball and softball, and let them identify to us where their priorities are, so that we can take our resources and focus them on the priorities. And we can try to use other DPW staff, if there's some time where we can take a highway individual, you know, if the weather's not appropriate for doing roadway work, and maybe it's light rain, maybe we can do some field work on one of the ball fields. So, you know, we're trying to sense the creation of DPW. We have been fortunate. We've been able to move people, you know, across lines, so to speak, to help out.
I completely understand the challenges, and I'm not in any way, shape, form, I just know that that field has been there. I know that, you know, we have to, you have to spend time and resources to maintain it. So since we have to, I'd like, you know, if there's a way to utilize it to make the work you guys put in worthwhile, versus where seeding and mowing and aerating a field that's, I don't know, maybe used five times a summer, that's, you know.
But through the chair, trying to balance the needs of the leagues and what their priorities are, if they told, if they were to say to me, "Bill, we need Holstrom Court. Your guys need to step up the maintenance there," then we would have to somehow, or maybe we'd be coming back to the town administration saying, "We need additional staff to be able to do this." But currently,
Understood.
We're meeting their demands. At least, they tell us we are.
I know.
And so, we do the minimal at Holstrom Court, so that the grass is mowed and the weed whack. And beyond that is...
Everybody wants to use the newer field, so, you know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anybody get anything else? Mr. Goodrich?
I just wanted to thank you for putting this into a report. You know, sometimes you need to just see it on paper, to see actually the number of fields and facilities that you're maintaining. And I know when we drive around Auburn, you know, they're maintained very well. And I think morale down at the DPW is much higher than it's been, and I think you're doing a great job. And your department heads as well. Division heads, I'm sorry, division heads.
Thank you. Yeah, the POCs guys are out there, seven o'clock in the morning. You can see them mowing lawns and weed whacking, and, you know, they do a tremendous job. I know when we had the Independence Day celebration, I was proud to go up there and see how fabulous that looked. And, you know, they spent, you know, an entire day, if not two days, up there, making sure that everything, every weed was whacked, and it was, the grass was meticulous. And so, they do an excellent job with the limited staff that they have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like you to ask the town manager, Ms. Jacobson, if we could get, you know, I know we've talked a little bit about tonight about employees, seasonal help, and, you know what, along with materials, the resources you have, it also takes labor. And it's pretty labor-intensive when you get into working groundwork and facilities. And can you give us a little bit of a background on what kind of cost it would be to, you know, just to maintain those fields as they are, and just to see exactly what they have to work with, and what we would have to have in addition, just to, for the additional fields?
I can give you one figure that the CFO just provided to me, and we have had discussions about this previously, but I also then would turn to Bill Coyle, because he can also tell you the cost of maintaining the Pappas fields. But every time we add a new facility, for instance, should we do something with the Southhold Road and decide that it needs to be maintained, or manicured, or anything beyond letting it go in its natural state, that is going to add to the workload. Roughly speaking, for a 16-week seasonal person at 40 hours a week at $11 an hour, it's about $7,100, $7,200. It's just approximately in there is our cost. So, that's for one person. So, I return to Bill, you could better explain the cost of the Pappas field and what we're spending.
Yeah, in terms of maintaining the Pappas facility, just the maintenance alone, if first, we tried to maintain it with one individual from the POCs department who was there for an entire week. Got to be kind of old fast for one person to never leave that facility. So we ultimately ended up putting five people up there for one day. So, I mean, you can do the math based on, you know, what five individuals would cost for a day. Southhold Road, we just completing, completed mowing the majority of it. There's still additional areas that the POCs employee wasn't sure, to the other extent of the opposite side of Southhold that we owned versus what Mr. Post still owned. So we still have to go back and do some additional mowing. We were there for, you know, five to seven days by the time it was between breakdowns and whatnot. I think the first time going through it, obviously, was slower than it would be in the future, trying to identify any rocks that you could avoid and different things. And we'll look at whether or not that has to be done twice a year. We'll go back out there in probably late September, early October. We may find that it may be beneficial to mow it twice a year, only because it may take twice as long if you don't go twice a year and you can't see the rocks and other objects. So that's, again, that's five to seven days, one person, so, twice, twice a year. So that's additional work. Also, the landfill, previously, for quite a few years, it hadn't been maintained. So, we do mow that annually now, but eight, nine years ago, it wasn't being maintained at all, and there were large trees that we had to cut down. And so there was a significant amount of work to maintain that as well. We did speak to potentially an additional one or two, maybe, over the few next few years, additional seasonal staff. So, obviously, that would help us with improving the aeration and seeding. Just the timing of it kind of is harder. But other tasks, too. On a day-to-day basis, people will go to Wayne Blumquist and ask him, "Can you do this? Can, we have this that can be done?" And he's, he has his hands full just mowing the lawn and having the weeds, you know, kept down. So, when additional things are asked of us to do, it becomes difficult. So having an additional person, or even two people at some point at a later date, would be beneficial. And I do appreciate Mr. Carpenter's comments, because, you know, obviously, more staff would make our job easier and would make it easier to keep the POCs better maintained. I think they're still doing an excellent job, but there's, we can always improve that.
Can I just ask one follow-up question? How much do we spend on maintenance of fields? We're talking about $72,000, seventy, between $70,000 and $80,000 for whatever. But, the cost of these facilities, Pappas is a $5 million project, which is not really true, because we had to go out and ask people to pay for lights, and we had to go out and have people pay for tot lots. And so the actual cost of Pappas is, so to me, if we're going to have these first-class facilities, which I think is great, and I do, you know, my comments are never directed at staff saying, "You're not doing anything." And a lot of times when I ask questions, I tend to get responses back that makes it sound like I'm accusing the staff of not doing something, which is far from the truth, because I know how hard they work. I see it. I've lived in town my entire life. You know, not too many years ago, the highway superintendent was one of those kids out there mowing the lawns. So, you know, we're spending an awful lot of money. People are using these fields more intensely. It seems to me that we should be investing in making sure that our investment is well-protected. So that's, you know, my five cents worth. But, you know, I am very concerned about Southhold Road because of what it was, and for $3 million, almost 3.2 with interest, that's a hell of a lot of investment to go to seed. So, that is my concern. Pappas is obviously five-plus million, and the other fields obviously cost in the millions as well. So, I think we need to really budget to take care of these things, because people expect that they're going to be able to use them. Not just for ball games and whatnot, but for, the Pappas Pavilion is highly used, and, you know, hopefully, Southhold will get some use while it's in between now and then. So.
In working with, again, through the chair, working with the POC superintendent, any of the equipment needs that we've had in the past, the administration has been very supportive of us with those requests. The only one I wish we hadn't given up was our slope mower that we changed. Now that we have the Southhold Road land, it probably would have been a good one to have, so we might have to revisit that in the future. But, no, I think we, the administration has been supportive, so I think we can always look to improve things. And certainly, if there's needs that Wayne has, or Kristen or Kenny see, certainly, I can speak to the administration about that. But, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, I also just want to reiterate, we, for this year's budget, we did plan for the once, if not twice-a-year, maintenance of the Southhold Road property. Recognizing that, at the time we were preparing the budget, it was the kickoff time, so Mr. Coyle had estimated that he could do that with his current staff as long as it was just a once or twice-a-year issue. Once we find out what the direction of the board is with regard to the final use of the property, then we will have to look at the budget again. And at that point, we will probably, we would have to bring on more employees, depending on what we do with it. Likewise, we're looking to do the same thing with the golf course. If we take over the golf course, we're looking ahead to what kinds of equipment we'll need, what the cost will be, and how we're going to pay that. So, once we know the use, and once we know what we're going to do, we'll absolutely make sure that we have the staff to maintain it. We did plan in this year's budget, however, for the maintenance, because a vote had not, and still has not been taken as to what the final use is. But that will help direct us for the budget preparation for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody get anything else?
No.
Okay. We have in front of us a, we want to vote on that Southhold Road land use as it relates to the borrowing. And this is a follow-up as to what we had for the...
I jumped in early. I jumped in early, remember, and made a motion.
Okay.
We already voted. We already voted.
Can we have, yeah. The motion that was made earlier was what?
Was that the entire town-owned property and Southhold Road be bonded for municipal use over the next 10 years.
So, that, okay, so that, now we, this is going to be 3B that we're talking on, and then actually, 3C?
Right, for purposes of the minutes, we could reference what, the vote that was taken.
Okay, so we can take care of that, so that we're covered with our motion for tonight for that land for...
And just so we're clear, so we're clear on this, and so the vote is for municipal use, not at this point for active recreation, building, or anything. That will be done at a later date. This is strictly for municipal use for purposes of the bonding.
Okay.
Correct, okay.
Does that preclude town administration from banning it in year one if, all depending on how the vote goes? I would suggest that it borrow for municipal purposes.
That's what the motion was.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion to move up an item one year.
All right. Okay. So, the motion that we had earlier is going to cover what we had for the initial from the Open Space Committee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's great. Okay. Mr. Coyle, thank you very much. And now, what I'd like to do is make a motion to move up item 6A?
I'll make a motion, seeing Mr. Benoit is here, to move up item, town manager, item 6A, the draft bylaw for registered medical marijuana dispensaries.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you. I'm going to start this off and invite Matt Benoit, the town planner, to sit up at the table with us and join us, if possible. And also, if I could, and I know it's going back, but I just want to thank DPW, and Kenny, and Wayne, and Bill, and Kristen, for all the work that they've done on our parks and fields, and for all your crew. They're doing a great job. We do get a lot of calls into the office, and I'll tell you, the calls are that the fields look great. So, and if there is an issue with a field, they've been extremely responsive, have gone out and addressed it. So, from the perspective that we see, whenever a resident calls with a concern, and it does happen, it's addressed right away. So I just want to thank them also.
Yes. Thank you to the DPW, POCs, and Recreation. Thank you very much for your work.
And now, Mr. Benoit is here. So the reason that we're bringing this draft bylaw forward to you, I'm just going to give you a little bit of background, then I'm going to turn to Matt to explain exactly what this is and what the process is. The reason we're doing this is, a couple of years ago, as you know, I believe it was back in 2012, the voters of this state voted to allow for recreation, to allow for medical marijuana dispensaries and growing facilities, and for medical use, not for recreational use. And because of that, the Department of Public Utilities at the state went forward and created a very extensive, comprehensive set of regulations and procedures for how to get licensed to do that. As a result of that, the state, probably around 2000, end of 2013, was, they were accepting applications for dispensaries and growing facilities. And under the regulations at that time, the state had stated, had said in the regulations, that you could have no more than five dispensaries in a county, in a designated county, for year one only. And in, the language was silent on what would happen after that, but for, the DPU had said that additional facilities could be licensed if there was a need. It was never identified what would determine that need and how many additional facilities. So, a number of communities, including Auburn at the time, we looked at, we talked to our planning board at the time. Mr. Benoit was not here, but the prior planner, talked to the planning board, talked to the ZBA. At that time, it was determined that it didn't appear to be necessary to put any kind of temporary moratorium, and the only thing that's allowed is a temporary moratorium, and that's only with a town meeting vote and approval of the Attorney General. And it has to be for really specific reasons. And some communities have been denied that, because they didn't have a specific reason. So, at the time, it was decided that with our current existing zoning, we would be able to classify these types of units and be able to work within the existing zoning. Things have changed, and in May of this year, the Department of Public Utilities made a couple of changes to the DPU regs and regulations. The two most important ones are that, number one, the process for applying for being a licensed dispensary or a licensed growing facility has been simplified. It used to be a qualitative process, whereby points were given on an extensive application, and then the DPU would decide which applicant had the most points, and which one would therefore be awarded the license. So some, I believe the number's around 180, applications were received, and at one point, the DPU had narrowed it down to 20. That potentially met the criteria and were awarded points for meeting different parts of the criteria. That did not result in any facilities actually coming online, but for one, which is in Salem, and one, I believe, in Northampton is about to come online. So, Governor Baker, when he took office, looked at this process and said, "We need to move this forward. There are people who have medical needs that aren't being met. We need to get more facilities out there." So they looked at the structure of the program from the prior administration, and the structure of the application process, and determined that it was so complicated that it was not allowing market forces to drive the process. So the changes that were made, there were many, but the basic changes that I wanted to... to bring to the board's attention are, there is now no cap on how many facilities can go into a county or a community. It's going to be market-driven, not qualitative. So if three applicants apply and all three applicants make the criteria that's set, then all three applicants will receive a license. It's similar to licensing pharmacies. The philosophy of the administration is it's let market forces drive it. And if there is a market for 10 facilities in a county, then 10 facilities will go. So that increases the opportunities for these licensing, for these facilities to seek licenses, increases the probability that they will get a license. So therefore, we wanted to take a look at our regulations and say, okay, now that, in the first couple of rounds, there were no licenses given to Enron and Worcester Counties. So we were not affected by it initially. Now things have changed, and we want to take a look and see if we should not make our regulations a little bit more directed so we can guide the development. You cannot prevent it. You cannot stop it. That's against the law, but you can guide it. You cannot be, you can't go against what state law has said or what the policies have said, but you can do some changes. So I just want to read it. So that's the first thing. The second change that was made was that, and in the initial round, a person, an applicant seeking to get a license, got more points. I think it was another 20 points. It was the highest weighted criteria in the licensing process. They got 20 points if a letter was provided by the community in which they were seeking to locate. It wasn't required, but it gave them additional points. It has changed, and now it is required to have a letter from the community saying that you support this. So this puts more authority back to the municipality. So even given that, we still wanted to look at our regulations, and I'll let Matt explain how we looked at it.
I just have a, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. You're saying DPU. DPU or DPH?
I'm sorry, DPH.
I know we have DPU on the next agenda item, but...
DPH, sorry. Department of Public Health.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Department of Public Utilities and Municipal Immigration.
Okay. So the regulations all fall into DPH?
Yeah. So basically, right now, anyone seeking to put in a facility like this would be required to get a letter from the municipality before they were even considered. So that's a good thing. However, given that, we still may want to look at whether we can have a moratorium, which would be temporary, which would have to go to town meeting, would have to get Attorney General approval. And as a result, we did, I spoke to the person at the Attorney General's office, who was in charge of making the recommendations to the Attorney General. The moratoriums that previously the Attorney General had allowed had to be temporary, and they had to expire by December of 2014. So after 2014, you couldn't do a moratorium. That, however, was prior to these changes that came out in May. So the advice that I was given was, there is nothing to say that you can't apply for it. There is nothing to say that we're, the Attorney General's office, would either deny it or approve it. But if we made a good argument in case, in the case of a moratorium, they would absolutely consider it. What the end result is, we don't know. However, keep in mind, that has to go to town meeting. This zoning bylaw would also have to go to town meeting. So at best, what we would probably look for, and we want to think this through, which is why we're not making a recommendation today, we have a couple months, but at best, if we recommended a moratorium, it would probably be to carry us through until we had AG approval and the bylaw was in place. You have to have a specific time set. So given that, that's why we're here today doing this, where we didn't do it a couple of years ago. The scheme has changed. It's going to be easier to get licenses for these facilities, and we feel it's time to look at this. And we are recommending to the board through the Mass General Law process that the Board of Selectmen recommend this bylaw to go to the planning board for public hearing and public comment and discussion and tweaking and revising. But we're recommending that it come from the Board of Selectmen because, under the law, you are one of the entities that can make a recommendation, as Mr. Carpenter knows from being on the planning board. So with the approval of the chair, I'd like Mr. Benoit to explain what this bylaw is that you have.
Would you please?
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The bylaw before us today is to regulate the use for registered marijuana dispensaries. I compiled this information using 105 CMR 725, the state regulations, also the Department of Public Health regulations, under the articles of 2012, as well as four other communities within Massachusetts and their bylaws that have already been acted for these types of uses. And the entire purpose of doing this, not only because this shows good faith in working towards a local bylaw for a possible moratorium, as Julie had already mentioned, but this also gives the town the ability to regulate and enforce these types of uses. Because as of right now, without this bylaw, if someone were to come with this sort of use in town, it's up to the code enforcement officer to determine what section of the bylaw that use fall under. And that sort of use, depending on what it is, if it's a retail store, or if it's an agricultural facility, trying to, for this material, those sort of uses, depending on the best-fit description in our bylaw now, could fall in a residential neighborhood. Not to say that it wouldn't be susceptible to state regulations, of course, but our zoning just doesn't have that specific use. So what this bylaw does, it gives us a forum, or I'm sorry, it gives the town a forum for an applicant to apply for a special permit from the planning board, as well as site plan approval, so the site can be managed. And it gives enforcement authority to the, through the permit process, to the local Board of Health, the police, this will go through DCG too. So this gives us a better control for this type of use instead of operating strictly under state regulations.
So this draft here that we've got in front of us tonight is strictly a guideline, and you're being proactive with this.
Yes.
And it show, now, you haven't got anybody that has come forward saying that Auburn's going to be, you know, our town, or that's what we want to, you know, bring one of these dispensaries into. We haven't got anybody on the books that are doing that. We're just being proactive with a bylaw so that we can give them direction. Is that correct?
Correct. Formally, no one has applied for this sort of use, but our office has received maybe four to five calls in the last six months. But no one with specific properties or anything in mind, formally.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Simonean?
I have a question. Section 9.3 dot 13 dot 3, conditions, specifically paragraph F. "The planning board shall require the applicant to post a bond at the time of construction to cover the costs of the removal of the RMD in the event the town must remove the facility. The value of the bond shall be based on the ability to completely remove all material, plants, equipment, blah, blah." I'm not going to read the whole thing. It, basically, the cost of removing the facility if that condition presents. So my question is this. Several months ago, we had the situation, I believe it was with Old Cart Road, where there were conditions that failed, needed to be improved on, and the bond was so old that it didn't even come close to covering the cost of those improvements. And it was a pretty big hit to the Auburn taxpayers. So is it possible to put language in that paragraph that would cover, I mean, you know, if it's 15 years down the road where we run into that situation where someone just says, "Hey, you know what? I'm not, I'm walking away," and the town is on the hook to remove that, it may be that the bond in, you know, 2016 doesn't cover the cost in 2031. So is it possible to have language in there to accommodate for that type of...
I believe that would, through the chair, I believe that would be something included in the bond agreement instead of the bylaw. But it is a very good point, and the reason I put this in here is it was consistent with a lot of the other towns that I saw, and I thought it was, but I do see your point.
As long as we cover ourselves there. I mean, I just hate to see something like that happen again. You fool me once, you know, the second time, it's our fault. So, okay. Thank you.
And that's a good point Mr. Simonean made, that there are some questions. There will be some tweaking, there will be some adjustments, and that's what we're want to do, is we wanted to take a look at it, get a little bit of a background, a little summary of what we were doing with this, so to be sure that the planning board gets this, and they can have their open discussions, their open hearings, and so that the public, the general public, the department heads, and board members, anybody can go to those meetings, ask those questions, and be sure that things like Mr. Simonean's asked tonight, that those can get incorporated or can get just addressed one way or another and see if it's something we can use. So it's not a meeting tonight to ask those questions and decide what we're going to do, but it's good to get a summary, a background of what we're doing, and just to go forward so that we can get this over to the planning board.
Certainly. And furthermore, Mr. Chairman, just kind of in support of the bond question, the planning board has a covenant for subdivisions, or a bond procedure, that they had to go through town council for review and get it situated to meet the subdivisions. I'm sure something very similar for this sort of use would be in order in the future, to have a specific bond for that, if it makes it through town meeting, of course.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Carpenter?
I do have two questions. One is the hardship requirement that an individual can apply for. In doing a quick gloss over on the website, I didn't see any town role in how these were being cited. Are we going to be notified of those type of things? Or is there any town role at all?
That's the individual user.
Yes.
We're not talking about the facility itself.
Right.
Other than the exemption. I believe that's regulated strictly through the Mass Department of Public Health, and I don't know, I can't speak on behalf of our Board of Health. They have a local regulation for that sort of use yet. Maybe that's something to be visited in the future. But again, and our discussions earlier, this coming to DCG, in my opinion, is certainly a huge step to getting input from all the other town departments as well. And, but if our local Board of Health doesn't have the regulation in place, they would be following these state regulations.
And my only other question is, when these facilities fall afoul of their permit, we have in here proposed that the operator notify us. Does the state have any, do they contemplate any notification? Do we get any say in the hearing process of those type of things? Because, I mean, relying on someone, an operator, they may not necessarily be so quick to run up here if they, if we're not notified by the state.
Certainly. This kind of goes to the new process, right?
Yeah, we can tag team this, but through the chair, right now, the Department of Public Health regulates those who are users, which would be, some of that is privy information, but they also regulate the licenses. And it's my understanding that an RMD has to be relicensed annually.
Yes.
And that is a process that the state undertakes, and it includes inspections and verification that the licensee has met all the terms of the license under state law as well as under local law. And that falls under DPH.
Okay. So I just have one follow-up to that. Inspection's local. Are we going to be, who has primary responsibility to make sure that they are following the rules?
Through the chair, under the, under the legislation and under the DPH procedures, that falls to the state. But if there are local bylaws that state differently, then local bylaws apply as well.
Okay.
So I believe in this, there are some provisions that have been put in here to allow for Chief of Police and Board of Health to have some jurisdiction over the, whether they are following the local regulations. But it is also overseen, or will be overseen, heavily by the state.
Okay. Do we anticipate we're going to need to add staff?
I'm sorry, I couldn't give you...
Do we anticipate we're going to need to add staff? I know Board of Health has two people, and I know they're running pretty much constantly just trying to keep up with their work. This would be an additional inspection. You know, do they have the resources? Does the department have the resources to take on this project as a local inspection?
Through the chair, if a dispensary were to come here, we had, in the first round that went through the state, we actually had four companies that were looking at locations that were here. And none of them, I don't know if any of them put in for licenses, but none of them were licensed. At that time, we felt that there would be an impact to the police department and potentially to the fire department for fire-related services. But until we know the size of the facility and whether it's a dispensary versus a growing facility, we couldn't anticipate that. But generally speaking, there would likely be an impact on the additional workload that would be required for any large facility like this.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one last question. I know you said that you drafted this, Matt, or followed some things, ones that other towns had, had used. My last question is about the site restrictions, distances from boundary lines, places where it can't be near, other, other types of things like schools and such. Do you know if there's, if there's additional state restrictions on things like that?
Through the chair, actually, we took, these are the exact state restrictions.
Okay.
We didn't want to expand on it yet, just in case.
Is, is that, is that something that a business could get a variance on if, you know, there's a strange lot or something like that? And, you know, be with, within, you know, less than that with those boundary lines? Is it, is it possible to...
I don't think that particular, if you're, say, talking about the 500 feet from a residential or 500 foot from a school, that they couldn't get a variance from that one, because it's a state variance, because it reflects the state regulation.
All right. Thanks a lot.
The only thing on here that I thought was something we added was regarding a pre-existing nonconform residential uses within non-residential districts. That was something I saw in another town bylaw, but the rest of them do follow the state rules to the T.
Okay. Fair enough. That answered my question. Thanks.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, through the chair, and just to add to that, Mr. Simonean, the, there is, as you know, these facilities are not under federal law, technically.
Understood, yes.
So right now, until December of this year, it's my understanding that the federal government has made a decision not to go after states that pass laws, like Massachusetts did and some others did, through the end of the year. And there's also federal legislation pending that potentially extends that permanently, in which case there would be no conflict. However, it is also my understanding that the U.S. Attorney General is looking to enhance or increase the setbacks that you just mentioned from the current, what we have in Massachusetts as 500 feet to 1,000 feet, and to include daycare facilities as well as other facilities that our Massachusetts does not currently include. We could be more restrictive. It's my understanding, under the law, we could make that 500 feet 250 feet. We were concerned because there may be a federal challenge to it, in which case our bylaw would be challenged. So for now, we wanted to follow the state. But I want to make sure everyone knew, there, there is a potential federal challenge to these things.
Federal or state can always do something that supersedes anything we did, and I mean, that's, that's life. But for now, yeah, that's fine. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Mr. Benoit, can you give us some kind of a process of what we, if it goes from here to the planning board, which I'm going to support tonight anyway? What is the plan? What's the process? When do you foresee bringing this bylaw basically to a town meeting?
Through the chair, standard Form 7, just like a regular bylaw amendment, just like we did recently for the zoning alternate members. Same, same procedure. The planning board has to hold a hearing on it within 65 days of your vote from there. There's no time restriction on how long to revise this draft. Hopeful consideration for fall town meeting, if not annual in the spring.
Needless to say, being proactive, sooner the better.
Yes. And if we are to request a moratorium, that would have a timed deadline on it, and we still have to get it in front of one of the two town meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Ms. Goodrich?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen transmit the draft bylaw for registered marijuana dispensaries to the planning board per Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second.
Is there any further discussion, comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? And thank you, Matt, for coming forward tonight and bringing this to us. And we look forward to having the public hearings and see what kind of information is drafted. And we've had some questions here tonight that has kind of probably started the ball rolling. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Now, back to the agenda, we have, under Communications, we have no Communications in front of us. Board of Selectmen, general items, under Gift Acceptances, I have one here from Cheryl Cronin, the amount of $20 donation to the animal control. Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Chairman. We accept with, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Under Proclamations, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony that the Chamber of Commerce is requesting a proclamation for a business who's going into 716 Southridge Street. That's next to the Colony Farms, across from the Auburn Plaza. And it's the Art and Lab Gallery. And the ribbon-cutting is to be held on August 1st at their new location, again, at 716 Southridge Street, that's opposite the Plaza. And they are requesting a proclamation. Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the requested proclamation for the ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Art Lab and Gallery for August 1st that was requested by the Chamber of Commerce, provided that the Chamber of Commerce, you know, submit to the town manager the information requested necessary to provide an adequate proclamation.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I just have a general comment.
Yes.
I would like us to look at a different way of recognizing businesses coming to town. I know it's been discussed about proclamations being given out rather freely, and if we can honor them in a different way, I would, I would like to see us develop something along those lines.
Okay. So, Mr. Carpenter, you're saying that you'd like to develop some sort of a process for proclamations? How to receive information?
Well, I, I think opening a business is great, but I would rather give a proclamation to somebody who's been in business for five years, 10 years, those type of things. If there's another way to honor their commitment to the town, their coming to town, I think that would take this out of the stream and out of the criticism that the board gets for handing out proclamations. Some people think it's unmerited. I don't necessarily agree, but if we can come up with a policy where we can suitably honor someone who's making a significant investment in town, but segregate it from a proclamation, I think for my five cents, that's something I'd like to see us try and develop, just so that when we do give a proclamation, people feel that it is specific to whether it's public service, whether it's, you know, we've had the Auburn Women's League, $22,000 for a new sign, that was a two-year process. I mean, that's, that's a substantial time commitment, and I would like to see something like that be recognized with a proclamation and have something else for.
Okay. Well, with, we haven't got that on the agenda for tonight, but I'd like to see that on the, the next agenda, and we can put that under as a member item, and we can talk about the process for proclamations at that point. Okay. And if you will, we'll make a note of that right now, we'll put that on as a member item for the next. And if you have any further information or any other comments you want to bring forward, please do so at that time. Thank you.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded for proclamation for 716 Southridge Street, and that's for the Art and Lab, the Art Lab and Gallery for ribbon-cutting on Saturday, August 1st. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, I just would maybe suggest that we poll the members, see if they'll be able to get in for a signature, otherwise, since considering it's a Saturday, maybe suggest that Sharon, you see electronic script signature for members on the, on these proclamations that are requested last minute. Today is Monday, I'm not sure when Sharon can get it prepared, maybe not until Wednesday. And all five board members would have to sign it before Saturday. So this may be one of the cases where we want, we want to use a script signature for, for members. Just a suggestion.
So the motion's been made to...
Authorize script signatures.
Authorize script signatures for this proclamation.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
I would like to just ask if members, I mean, this is something that we do. I think we should be able to get up here and sign a proclamation. I mean, these people are making a substantial investment in our community. You know, we do have the warrant that we sign every week, so I think we should all be able to get up here by Saturday to sign this. I don't like the script personally.
And that...
And I understand why the vice chair is, is mentioning it, and it's, I would just like to see the members, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Mrs. Goodrich.
So I just had, at the beginning of my discussion, I had said if we could poll the members, and if we can't, you know, at least have that backup motion, if we don't get signatures, we can do the script. I mean, I don't know when the proclamation will be ready, and if all members are here for the remainder of the week to sign it. So it was just a backup plan to have in case, because it is last minute, to sign it. I prefer signing, I agree with you, but this would be as a backup if, if members weren't here to sign it by the end of the week.
I mean, my feeling is if members can't come up here and sign it, then they should not be on the proclamation. And we issue the proclamation with those members who sign it. To me, a script signature is cold, is impersonal, and it certainly doesn't reflect the commitment that the people, whether they be from the community or someone like this who opens a business, I think, you know, this is something that we're being asked to do. I would, I won't support giving script personally, but I understand the vice chair's motion, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Simonean.
I, I mean, I, I see both sides of the argument, or the debate, and it makes sense. It is a personal thing, but at the same time, you know, if it's, if it is a last-minute request, and, and, you know, I realize Sharon has a lot of other things to take care of, and if she can't get it done till Thursday, I don't personally mind if my script signature's on there rather than leave it blank. You know, she sends out an email, if you can come up, let me know. If not, I'll put the script on. I mean, I, I'm fine either way, so whatever the board wants is, is fine. But I, I certainly see both sides of that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, the motion been made that we allow the script to be as a backup plan for this proclamation. Um, yes.
It doesn't have to be all or none, right?
Right.
They all, it doesn't have to be all script. If some people sign it and others can't get...
That's correct.
If, yes, but I understand it's easier to script it all, or, you know, is, I guess just...
Well, if it's script, I would be doing it as I'm preparing the proclamation.
Okay.
Have to get it back in the computer to do script on someone and leave the signature.
All right. Okay, just as a backup plan, the motion been made to script the signatures for this particular proclamation if the signature's not available. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. There was also a request by the chamber if there would be any one of the selectmen available for that day. So if you're going to be available, just touch base with me after the meeting. Thank you. Okay.
Do we have a time, Mr. Chairman?
Um, let's see. Let's see.
I believe it's 10:00 AM.
No, I...
I think it's 10:00 AM.
Is it, is it 10:00 AM? I haven't got that in front of me here.
I'd be happy to volunteer. I know the members are very busy, so I'd be happy to take that responsibility if people...
Right now, I don't know.
Okay.
I may be there.
Thank you. All right, so, Mr. Carpenter, you will be there anyway.
Yes, sir.
We can verify that through the chair, if, you know, we'll get that information. We did send out an email on it, I just, I can't access it right now, it's coming up pretty slow, but I'm pretty sure, as the vice chair said, it's 10 o'clock.
Okay. Next we have on the agenda is item 5C, and that's voting the appointment of the associate member on the Zoning Board of Appeals, Karen Blaze. The motion to appoint Ms. Blaze would include her term, which expires on June 30th, 2016. And from the note we have is one associate member seat is being advertised as an opening.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we appoint as an associate member with a term expiring on June 30th, 2016, Ms. Karen Blaze, with our thanks for her continued service. She's attended pretty much every meeting, even though she hasn't been able to act, and she's really done a great job, so.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Just in the comments, I believe, just in the comments, I believe the motion has to have the expiration date, the term.
I did say June 30th, 2016.
Oh, you did, okay.
So, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Thank you. Okay. Under item 5D, Mr. Simonean asked for a board vote for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for a report on potential future rate increases. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Simonean, so he can talk a little bit about this.
For a few months now, I've been reading various articles that have concerned me. One of the most recent, I, I made copies and asked Sharon to pass them out to other board members as well as town administration. This, this article is just a couple of weeks old, and it hits a lot of the highlights of what several of the articles that I've been reading have discussed, and certainly encapsulates those. And I, obviously, I'm not going to sit here and read the whole article. Everybody's capable of reading on their own budget, for the, some of the things that have concerned me. There's information in here, and this came straight from the CEO of Waste Management. This was an article in Bloomberg, and he was quoted as saying, "The industry is experiencing a national crisis with almost all of America's 2,000 high-tech recycling facilities." And this goes on to highlight some of the things that he and other people involved in waste management and recycling have seen as concerns regarding costs on the road. A lot of it revolves around single-stream recycling. It, it doesn't appear to be everything that it was presented as several years ago, and other people, universities have, have published studies on this recently. So there are some concerns for me, because almost every single article that I've read speaks to potential rising costs for municipalities in the very near future. And I'd just like to hear from the Solid Waste Committee and find out, you know, how much of this they're aware of, hopefully all of it, and, you know, what potential solutions we have, or at least a plan going forward. Because one of the largest concerns is that the recycling industry is looking to put the brunt of these increased costs for a lot of what comes down to their poor planning on the backs of municipalities and their residents. I don't think that's fair. We're not in the recycling game, we don't work in the waste management, and when I say we, I say we as an entire town and all the other towns. Why should we bear the cost of the lack of planning for the people who are supposed to be exerits in that field? So those are some of my concerns, and, you know, like I said, you guys have the article, you can read it for yourself, but there are a lot of things to be concerned about, and I'd just like to find out, you know, what, if anything, you know, down the road, we can do.
Well, I guess my question, I don't have any problem asking for any of this information. What do you foresee happening down the road if we get this information that, yeah, we are spending some money, but what, what do you see getting out of this?
If, hopefully, hopefully a plan on how we're going to, we're going to not bear these costs and put them onto the residents. What are, what are the solutions? What are our options as a town? What, what else can we do? I mean, you know, there's, there's issues with all of this. I don't, I don't want to take the ostrich approach and just stick our head in the sand and say, hey, hopefully they'll figure it all out and it, it won't cost us anything, because I don't trust anyone that much to, to just say, roll the dice and say, yeah, they'll take care of my money for me. So my goal is to hopefully not have, you know, the residents of Auburn see a huge cost increase in their trash bill and their recycling bill because of all of this. So I'd like to know where we're going, what the plan is.
Would, would you prefer a report, or would you prefer the presence of somebody from the Solid Waste being here to discuss?
Well, I mean, I would hope if they're going to prepare a report, they would have someone here to speak to it, to answer questions. I mean, I don't think anyone here on the board is, is a expert in waste management, so I'm sure that, you know, there would be other, other questions from any report that would be given, and hopefully, you know, we could understand.
Okay. Will you make that in the form of a motion, request that information?
Sure. I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what their schedule is and how soon they could be, get a report together and be here, but I, I mean, would a month be fair? A month from this meeting? The end of August?
Through the chair, I think that might be tight. It's the summer, I don't know how often the Solid Waste Committee meets. I don't want to put that responsibility on volunteers in the summer. I think it would be fair to ask for a report as soon as they can prepare it, understanding that they're going to have to get, get a quorum, and if, I'm sure they'll go as quickly as possible, I just think to put a timeframe on it puts a burden on the volunteers.
Let's ask one question.
Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
I know Mrs. Sullivan was before us not too long ago. Is the contract up this year? Has it been negotiated, I guess is my question. I forget.
Through the chair, Mr. Carpenter, two contracts relative to solid waste collection and disposal. The collection contract was just renewed for a period of five years. There is limited growth on that, contractually set. On solid waste disposal, this board voted to amend a 20-year contract in year seven, which actually reduced the tipping fee by $10 per ton from $74 down to $64. And there is limited growth set by an annual CIP not to exceed 3% a year. So the rate of the tipping fee is actually contractually set by Consumer Price Index Northeast Regional Annual Growth Rate, not to exceed 3%.
Now, I believe she told us that there would be an increase, even though tipping fees were down, hauling fees were up, or something of that nature?
The reduction in tipping, tipping fees in conjunction with the annual cost of the collection actually netted out to about a zero increase.
Good.
For year one.
Okay.
Don't we, don't we also have a cost for the amount, the tonnage that's sent through wheelbrayer?
That's the 20-year contract, I...
So we, the increase is 3% per year?
Up to 3%, not to exceed 3% per year.
Okay.
Okay. So you put that in the form of a motion, what we'll do is request the Solid Waste Committee to put this information together and to report back to us as soon as they have that information.
As quickly as possible. Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Mrs. Goodrich?
I just want to be clear, so the motion does not have a, you know, it's just, as soon as they are able to prepare a motion, there's no, I mean, a report, there's no specific date, is that correct?
Well, based on what the town manager said, if they're not, if they're not meeting anytime soon, I don't want to hold them to a date that they can't meet.
Okay.
But I would, you know, I would expect that they would do it as quickly as possible, and I have no reason to think they wouldn't, so.
Okay, I just wanted, before I voted on it, be sure that we weren't putting a specific date on them.
All right. So the motion had been made that we request the Solid Waste Committee to bring some information to us as soon as they have it put together, and then they can notify us, and we'll put them on the agenda. Is there any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed? Thank you. Okay. Under the town manager items, I, there's an item here, 6B, the update on municipal aggregation plan, and I requested this myself. I want to be sure that we have updates on this so that the general public knows where we are with the electrical costs and, you know, what the process is going to be, so that we can keep an eye on it, let people know when it's going to happen and how it's going to happen. So I will turn this over to Ms. Jacobson.
Great, thank you. Through the chair, the town did submit its application, I believe, it may have been in late May or early June, to the Department of Environmental Energy Resources, DOE-R. I want to make sure I get all my acronyms right this time. So that went to DOE-R. That's the first step. Through the efforts of Senator Moore and Representative Frost, and I would like to give them credit, because that process, previously, we were told that could take several months, and that process was moved up very quickly, and we went through the review process with DOE-R. We had our conference call, we were on with two other communities, we were all asked questions about our individual plans, and as a result, we received a letter that I believe I put in the last board packet, so you could see the approval process from DOE-R. So that being the background, moving forward, the next step is the DPU process, and that is Department of Public Utilities. That is the second and final leg of this process for municipal aggregation, as far as getting our approvals. The DPU has scheduled a hearing for August 17th, I believe it's at 2:00 PM in Boston. So the town is required to provide information to DPU prior to that hearing, and we've been doing so in the last couple of weeks. Every couple of days, Matt Benoit or myself have been getting questions, and we've been responding to the information. And we've been told by our municipal aggregator, which is Colonial, that Auburn has actually gone several steps beyond what's required under the process for public information purposes. We have it on the website, we had it on Auburn Community Television, we reached out to the press, we got a lot of coverage on it. So we've been keeping the public informed, that should help us in the process, that's one of the questions they're looking for. Today, I had to sign a certification that it is on our website and will remain on our website to inform the public. We're working with... We're working with Colonial to make sure that we have a good outreach program once we get the approvals, assuming we got the approvals, to move forward so the public will understand the process. So we won't know dates until after the August 17th DPU public hearing. That is their next step. We're hoping that following that, we provide any additional information that may be requested of the town at that meeting or following that meeting. And then the DPU takes a look at it. It goes through their legal department. It goes through all their technical department. And then we get an approval from them. Once that approval comes in, then we work with Colonial, which again is our municipal aggregation consultant, who then goes out and seeks bids on various electrical costs. And our hope is that we are able to get a provider underway prior to the winter months starting, but we won't know that. It's really out of our hands until DPU finishes their process. And they've done a great job. They've been very, very responsive with us, but I don't know how long that process takes normally. Again, the DOE-R process was the process that was supposed to take the longest time, and that went fairly quickly. So we want to thank, again, the legislative delegation for helping, as well as DOE-R and DPU for moving this along. At some point, we will make sure, that's part of our plan, is to make sure that the public understands how this works. And just to reiterate, it's an opt-out. You are in the program unless you opt out. You can opt out at any time, and likewise, you can opt back in at any time. So we'll make sure that we get information out to the public on what that process is, how it works, what, what you see when you get the letters of notification. And that's probably several months down the road, but we'll make sure that we update the public, hopefully, again, through the chair. Thank you for putting this on tonight. And we can continue to do that as the process moves forward to keep people in the loop.
I think that, you know, we're at the end of July, and you're saying August 17th is supposed to be that next meeting. Excuse me. Probably by a meeting in the first of September. There may be some more information forthcoming that we can just let people know what the process is, and maybe we can make a note for the agenda that we're going to add that on there. Just forthcoming information to keep it going, people know what's happening so that nothing happens to go by, and they know what the process is.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on that?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Well, under tabled items, I know that we've had some discussion, review of the proposed policy submitted to the subcommittee, and we've been doing this back and forth for several meetings now because of attendance at the meetings and whatnot, and the process being done by the subcommittee. So I will turn it to Mrs. Goodrich and give us an update of where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in your packet tonight, you have three separate policies, and then Mrs. Brotherton provided additional information at tonight's meeting for the public service recognition. So I'll start with the top page. These are, these are motions that were made and asked the subcommittee, which consists of Mrs. Brotherton and myself, to compose a proposed policy. So the first one is the committee appointment process and interview. And we, we had a lengthy discussion on this, and we felt, in being fair to all applicants who come before the board for an interview, it might be best to have them all answer these three questions that we're proposing, which the first is, "What is your interest in serving on this particular board or commission? What skills or knowledge do you bring to this board or commission? And do you have any time or scheduling issues that would prevent you from attending and participating in meetings?" And we felt that, you know, giving them an opportunity to answer these three questions, they can provide as mu, as much or as little information as they want regarding their interest in an appointment. And to keep all members participating, we suggest that Board of Selectmen members may ask one follow-up question. They may have a question on something that someone said. And in keeping with the past practice, the chairman of the committee or commission has always been invited to participate in the interview process. So the current chairman of the committee or commission would ask one follow-up question. And I think, we believe that this would be fair to all applicants, giving them an ample opportunity to share as much as information as they want with those three questions. But we don't necessarily need to take a vote unless the chairman would like tonight, but we certainly would accept some feedback.
I do remember some discussion back several months ago on this particular one, because we weren't sure, we were asking different questions of different people, and because of their background, their experience, and this seems to kind of fine-tune it a little bit and be able to ask a question of all, so that it's a fair process. Is there any other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Sponi?
So, um, hopefully, none of my comments will be taken personally, because I'm trying to do this from a professional standpoint, as always. I appreciate the amount of work that was spent on this, but I'm disappointed in the fact that there is not one single thing that I, during any of the discussions on this, made its way into the policy. I still don't believe we need a policy for this. That said, these three questions are about as vanilla as you can get, short of asking someone what their favorite color is. All of the information that would be provided and answers to these three questions is in the application because this information is put on there. What are you interested in? What's your background? And as far as asking different que, I mean, there's no reason to handcuff members of this board to only asking one question. Everyone should be asked different questions based on, because everyone is different. All individuals are different. They come from different backgrounds. They come from different experience. And I think that the only way you can truly distinguish whether someone is more qualified than another candidate is to be able to ask them specific questions to their background, to their experience, to their knowledge, to their understanding. None of these questions cover any of that. So I'll leave it there.
Mrs. Goodrich?
So I just, um, so I would ask Mr. Semonian to be a little more specific about what he asked the subcommittee to look at. And it, I, I was under the belief that, "What, what skills or knowledge do you bring to this board or commission?" was one of the issues that you raised. So if there, if there's something that, that we omitted, like I said, this is a draft policy. Please, that's what we're here for, is for feedback.
I don't think we need a policy at all on this. I, I don't, I don't even understand why we, I mean, we might as well just put on a play and hand everyone a script, because we all had discussed several times over the last few years, the fact that, there was, there was even comments made by you yourself, if I remember correctly, about having candidates sit in a separate room and bringing them in individually, so that no one would have an advantage over someone else as far as being able to hear questions that were asked and, and being able to maybe get a leg up and go, "Hey, this is what they're gonna ask me," or be more prepared than someone else. So it really just, I mean, it really takes any of the individual part of, of the, of understanding what someone knows and what their skillset is, because they're gonna get this in advance, they're gonna go, "Oh, okay, I'll say this, I'll say this, I'll say this. Boom, I'm done. Here you go."
Mrs. Brotherton?
In response to Mr. Semonian, I, I think we do need a policy so that we're all on the same page when it comes to things.
Why?
As far as these questions, because I think an interview process could be very overwhelming and could get very out of hand, Mr. Semonian.
Have you, how does it get out of hand?
I'm not saying it does. I'm saying it, it is possible that it could.
Can we direct this through the chair, please? So we, we're not back and forth and I don't.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. And then as far as that goes, each board member is then asked, they're allowed to ask their question. I don't want to discourage anyone from becoming a part of our community in any way, shape, or form. And if this is going to deter people from, from applying for an application, because the application process is difficult, I don't want to see that happen.
Okay. Mr. Cavanaugh, I'll get back to you, Mrs. Semonian.
Before I, I would like Mrs. Goodrich to be able to finish her thought, just because I think, with all due respect, she was interrupted, so I appreciate hearing what.
Well, if I did that, I apologize.
I don't know if you have anything extra.
Well, I was asking Mr. Semonian, you know, specifically what, you know, what we would have omitted, because I, I pointed out to number two, and when Mr. Semonian just responded, he used the phrase "skillset." I'm happy to change, what skillset or knowledge did you bring to this board or commission? I mean, I, this is, this is why it says "proposed." We came back here looking for, for, for input from other board members. And I, I appreciate and understand that you don't believe that we need a policy, but it was voted by the majority of the board, and it was sent to the subcommittee, and we're just, you know, doing the work of the subcommittee.
Yes, Mr. Semonian.
Through the chair. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to make this personal in any way, shape, or form. I just don't think that vanilla questions give us any real insight into someone's skillset, especially when they are able to prepare for it. And through the chair to Mrs. Brotherton, I'm gonna 100% vehemently disagree with your last statement, because I don't want the process to be so difficult that it deters people, but I, if somebody is afraid, if someone says, "Yeah, you know what? I just don't want to be asked anything other than like some simple questions." I don't want, I wouldn't want that person serving, because if you're not willing to put in the effort to go through a process to be part of a board, what does that speak to, to your level of commitment and your level of effort that you're gonna give if you're appointed to that board? I want someone who's willing to work for it, because that's gonna be the person who's not gonna let down their committee by showing up for every other meeting, or one out of every five. That's gonna be the person who's gonna show dedication. They're gonna show the willingness to put in the work. They're gonna show the willingness to put in the effort. That's what a professional interview determines. You don't just bring people in and say, "Here's some generic questions. Please, you've been predisposed of these questions. We know you've got prepared canned hip pocket answers that you're just gonna pull out. Blah, 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 done, we're done. One follow-up question. That was so easy, thank God." I don't want that. I, I want it to be a little bit difficult. I want, because that shows me that that person is willing to give that commitment. And we've talked to members of other boards. We've seen it. We, I've gone to meetings where, I mean, Mr. Plutukas has told us that he's had meetings where not enough, not enough people show up. So you've got less than a quorum, and all those people who took time out of their evening to show up, or afternoon to show up at that meeting, put other things on hold, came, and not enough members were willing to make the commitment. I think you can determine that somewhat ahead of time by making the process a little difficult. And I'm not saying, I'm not talking about the Spanish Inquisition here. I'm talking about questions that show me somebody, that the person is going to hopefully be a dedicated member, and not just go, "Yeah, I just want to go up there, do some simple, answer some simple questions and get the heck out of there." That, that's not fair to the other members, so.
Mrs. Goodrich?
So I just want to remind members that the only appointments that we're making currently are the zoning board of appeals and the finance committee. And certainly, I would think that if any applicants came before us for either the zoning board of appeals or finance, certainly if they had a genuine interest in serving on that, they just simply, as I said, they can, they can put as little or as much as they want into these answers. And certainly, if someone has a genuine interest in serving on the finance committee, they're going to, that's going to come through in their answers. And, and, I mean, we have these questions, and we have five additional follow-up, potential follow-up questions, and the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. We will have six additional questions to hear additional information. I mean, if, if we can't get information from these questions, which they can put a thoughtful response down for this, this board, and then have six follow-up questions, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what else we need to do.
Mr. Cavanaugh?
Well, I do want to thank the committee. I know it is a time commitment, and it is, and it is difficult. Anytime you, you prepare anything, it's, it's very easy to see what's not on the, on the, on the sheet, as opposed to seeing what's on the sheet. So, I mean, I fully understand that it's not an easy task to come up with this. I do share Steve's opinion as, as far as having specific answers or questions to be answered, but in the spirit of being somewhat collegial, I do have some feedback. I would, I would recommend a slight amendment to question three, only because we do have training and site visits for some boards. So I would just include that language, you know, are you gonna have any sort of time or scheduling issues if training comes up, as it does periodically for finance or ZBA, or any site visits, which is probably more to the point of a ZBA member than it is anybody else. And a fourth question that I, I thought might be interesting, especially as we've seen recently, we've had some people who have, are new to the community. It'd be, for me personally, I'd like to see us ask a fourth question and ask if they've previously served on a committee either in Auburn or elsewhere, in a prior, you know, place of residence, so that we could get some idea as to, that might also inform why they're interested in serving on X board. They may have done it in another community, or they may have just had an interest and not had an opportunity to serve. I am concerned about the restriction to one question I would ask for two to three. I would probably lean more on the three. And I would also say that the current chairman, in that, the chairman knows the subject, perhaps, I don't want to be rude or unkind, but better than we do. I would like to see them ask, you know, three to four questions if they so choose, because they actually have great knowledge of what that board does. And I think it would be of interest to us to hear the kind of questions that the chairman would come up with, and any sort of feedback that the chairman of the commission comes through. The only other feedback I would come back with is, this is for new process. What about reappointments? Because I think we would ask them some different questions. What is your interest in serving on this particular board they're already currently serving? You know, it could be something as generic or, or basic as, "Why do you wish to continue to serve on the board that you're currently on?" You know, those type of things. And I think as part of the process, we should also be asking the chairman, as was the past practice of this board, what about attendance? Are they going to training? We should have that information. The chair of the committee should provide that to the board, because we have had people who get appointed, and then they're like the ghosts. You never see them. So I would hate to see us, as the policy states, if you don't show up, but who's policing the fact that people aren't showing up? Certainly, I haven't heard any comments, and I certainly haven't made any comments of people not showing up. So I think we could include the chairman of the committee more in the process and ask them to give us the information on training attendance, their attendance at meetings, do they give us feedback? You know, are they participating fully in the meeting? Versus, "I'm here, I'm listening, and I vote."
Mrs. Goodrich?
So, so, and, and this is why we needed feedback. So, so the chairman would ask these questions, and Mr. Cavanaugh is saying, you know, he'd like to see up to three questions. Well, where it says, "Board of Selectmen may ask one follow-up question," that's to each question. So, so if, if the, if the members of the Board of Selectmen asked a follow-up question to number one, asked a follow-up question to number two, and asked a follow-up question to number three, that's three additional questions that you can word in any which way you want to, to get the information that you.
Through the chair, I wouldn't want to be held to these three or four questions. I would just, for clarity, for me, because when I'm looking, "May ask one follow-up question," that to me read, "We were just asking one question." So I would just say, "The board members may ask up to three questions, if that's what you're considering, or if we want to go as high as four." I mean, that's something, you know, for the committee. But I would not want to restrain us to just, "Oh, you said this," because we may have a question that we want to ask. And I think the committee members, from the brief time I've been on, have asked the same questions to the same individuals. So I don't think that we have a problem of, if somebody comes out of left field and just asks one question in a, in a hope to derail a certain appointment. So I would just, for me, for clarity, I would just say, BO, BOS members may ask up to three additional questions. And I would say that the chairman of the committee should have four, just because... And I would say that the Chairman of the Committee should have four, just because they have specific knowledge of the board's jurisdiction and, and its operation.
Just to be sure, I'm hearing you right. You are saying, uh, these questions be asked by the Chairman, but then, excuse me, the, um, the, uh, any member of the board can ask one?
Follow-up question to each question.
Not a, a follow-up question, but an additional question or a follow-up question?
Three questions. I don't wanna be, I do not wanna be tied to these, these questions. I think we're gonna get some good answers out of people just from these, and they may not even be, you know?
Mr. Simoni.
So, to that point, I have, I have two things. One, that would make more sense to me. So what I would propose is if you, if you wanna keep these three questions or somewhat a variant of these, give them as a que, as a written questionnaire to any potential candidate. Here, here's my written answer to these. Then, board members would be allowed to ask their own specific questions because not just the five of us here, but any five people down the road. The, the chances of any two or three of those five people asking the same questions is probably pretty slim. And because most of the time they come from different backgrounds, so they're gonna ask different questions. And through those five people, you're gonna get possibly 10 questions that are gonna cover a variety of things. So I would suggest either this is, these are three written questions. Thanks for the answers. Gives me a little bit of insight. Now I have a couple other questions from individual board members. Or, as I said previously, just not even have a policy and leave it as an open. Here, here's three questions. We'd like you to answer on paper. Put your thoughts down and we can, we can read those and go, "Okay, that's thought-provoking and I have, you know, I have a question I wanna ask based on what they answered." Or I have another question that doesn't pertain to those, but it's based on something they wrote in their experience. So those are my two thoughts. Either, either way, these should, this should be, "Here's three questions in writing. Give us your, your basic." And then there's questions from the different board members that, things that they, you know, I could look at something and read it and interpret it one way, and the four of you could interpret it completely different way, individual to you. And one of us would ask a question, the other one would go, "Oh yeah, I never thought of that. I, I looked at the same thing, but I didn't see it that way. I saw it differently." And that's where you're taking the individuality of this board and just lumping it all into three questions and, and it really just doesn't do justice to the process of trying to find those candidates who hopefully will fit in into the Finance Committee or zoning and be a good fit. Most of us know, the people who are on those boards, we kinda understand. And that, that doesn't mean we're gonna try and exclude people for specific reasons, but it, it gives us some insight into, um, you know, how that person thinks. And, and you can probably pretty much figure out, yeah, this might be a person who's, as Mr. Carpenter said, gonna be a ghost, so.
What is the wish of the board then? Do we wanna continue, send this back to the Subcommittee for more development? Do you want to negate it altogether? What do you wanna do? I'd like to hear from the board and so we can either send this back or we can stop together and we can try the processes independence may be.
I'd make a motion that we refer it back to the Committee, having them review the feedback that they've received and see what if any additional information, how they can work this up to include, well, basically do the work that they've been doing, so.
Second. Any further questions, comments? Mrs. Brotherton.
Through the Chair, Mr. Carpenter, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I have the right thought that you had. Policing to see about their attendance. I don't know if that would be effective in an initial interview, but maybe in a reappointment process?
That's what I meant.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
For reappointment, yep. Under the reappointment process.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions, comments?
Just, just one. So something else, something else for the Subcommittee to, on that note, something else for them to consider as they're, it's going back to the Subcommittee. If, if we're in fact going to use the attendance records as presented by the Chair, then potentially part of the reappointment process would be, what, what weight are we gonna lend to that? And, and I say that, for instance, is if a person has missed 15% of the meetings, if a person has missed 25% of the meetings, obviously there's gonna, you know, so it'd just be something to consider if we're gonna look at the attendance, like what, what do we consider beyond not an acceptable amount of meetings to, um, to be missed?
There is something in the policy. Pardon me for speaking out of term. There is, there is something in our policy that's, that is, that does address attendance. And I would say that we would review it and if we need to tweak it, you know, that might be... Only because like on a land use board, if you don't attend, it, it prolongs the hearing process. So maybe not so much for Finance, but that could also affect Finance. But especially for the ZBA, they meet once a month. If you can't get a quorum, I mean, they've been very good about getting a quorum, but if you have somebody who doesn't show up, that potentially can string out a project two to three months until you can get those same three together unless somebody goes, reviews the tape, and signs an affidavit with the town clerk. But, you know, I, I mean, it, it can be cumbersome for business owners and, and residents to have to follow a, a lengthy process like that.
So the motion's been made and seconded to send it back to Committee with the updates we've given them today, and we'll see them at a future date. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item we have is regarding reports and presentation materials for the Board of Selectmen. And I know that there was some discussion on this and, and Mrs. Brotherton and myself discussed this at length, trying to come up with a policy. And at this time, we're going to recommend that the Board of Selectmen not adopt a policy. We believe that the Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, you know, through conversations here at this board have been put on notice that Board of Selectmen members would like reports and presentation materials as soon as they're available. I think recently we saw the Town Manager send us information prior to a meeting, so she's aware that members would like it. And so at this time, we're gonna recommend that we, we not pursue this policy, but certainly if it becomes an issue, we encourage board members to bring it to the full board and the Subcommittee will revisit it and try to draft a policy.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
No, I mean, again, I do wanna say that I appreciate the Committee's work. I can't say that I'm surprised at the recommendation. I didn't think that there was great support for this. But I will say that there has been improvement on this for me, and I appreciate that. You know, I often get comments from the public, you know, "We're not just ornaments up here." And if I'm going to forward something to the Planning Board, I darn well expect that I'm gonna be asking questions if we're gonna inconvenience the Town Planner to come here. If we have a budget discussion, I don't expect the Finance Committee to just get something sent to them. The Board of Selectmen does have a role to give some guidance. And I think, like I've said in the past, we've had presentations where no questions have been asked by any board member. That, to me, is, makes the board, reflects poorly on the board. It also says to the staff member that we're not, we're not honoring their time. I mean, that's a heck of a lot of time that they put in to a budget presentation, to what Matt put into tonight, you know, the Fire Department with the, and any of the others who put in grant applications. So I wanna know, like this with the marijuana, I was able to do some research, so I didn't have to bother Matt or the Town Manager with 50 questions. I did pare it down to maybe 15, but that saves them time and it's not a headache that they're getting it on Monday morning when they're walking in the door and saying, "Geez, da-da-da." So I, I do appreciate the Committee's time and attention, and I appreciate the extra effort that the staff has been doing to give us a little lead time. So I appreciate that. So I, fully accepting of the recommendation at this time.
Just as, as a follow-up to your comment, Mr. Carpenter, as far as the, the budget goes and that goes to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is ultimately responsible through the Town Manager and CFO to present that to Town Meeting for Town Meeting to vote on. We review it, we see it and say, "Yes, we," because we are part of that process. Yes, we can make comments and questions, but we are not the ones gonna decide one way or another how that budget is to be drafted. That comes to the Town Manager and the CFO. It goes to, ultimately to the Town Meeting for their vote, but it's not to say that we can't ask those questions and whatnot. But I don't think it's something that we can get involved with as a, a study line-by-line item on the budget and saying, "This is what we wanna do with this and that." You could do that individually, there's no problem with that. You attend the Finance Committee meetings, but as a board, we look at it here, say, "This is the process. If we have a question, say, 'Well, maybe can we get a little bit more information on one particular thing?'" But to go line-by-line and just do a budget study, no, I don't think that's our process and I don't think that's our responsibility. But, uh, thank you for your comments.
If I can just follow up with that. I'm not saying line-by-line. I'm not saying that we're gonna sit there. But I do think that the residents of Auburn didn't elect us to simply send something along. If that's what we're here for, that, we don't need a Board of Selectmen because with all due respect, the Town Manager or CFO can just as easily walk that document to the Finance Committee and have the Finance Committee do it. Town Meeting expects us to make recommendations if we don't have an informed discussion, so the people see that this board is engaged in the business of the town. I think, again, it, it reflects poorly on us. I respect your, your difference of opinion, but, you know, I just, again, I'm not, I didn't run for this office to be an ornament on a stage. I ran because I had specific goals and, and I will continue to voice those goals and, and ask for your support, and I leave it at that.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
So I just wanna get back to the policy, and I appreciate Mr. Carpenter's comments. I just wanna reassure you, 'cause you said, you know, you weren't surprised that we came back with this recommendation. I wanna assure you that we had lengthy discussion on this. We talked about what types of reports and presentations, and, and we talked about timelines. We talked about Sharon getting him into the Board of Selectmen's packets as opposed to getting them separately for, for another presentation. And talked at length about the Board of Selectmen packets and presentations and developing the policy. So I just don't want you to think that, you know, because there wasn't a lot of support for it, we didn't have a lengthy discussion on this. We just felt at this time, as I said, with the number of reports and presentations, the Town Manager and the CFO being aware that we want these in a timely fashion, whether it's them sending them to us directly rather than through Sharon in a packet, we, we took time on this policy. We respect the fact that it was, the majority voted to send it to the Subcommittee, and we did do the due diligence on it.
Okay, Mr. Simoni.
I have a question. I also thought that part of this policy was going to, that it would be a two-part policy. One was to cover, and I know, beside, I've also mentioned in the past times where the budget, especially since it's such a large amount of information to digest. But I thought we were also gonna look at coming up with a policy regarding presentations that were done before the board and those, having that information similar to what we did with Board of Selectmen items where we'd have some description because there has been a couple of times in the past where something was put on the agenda with just a title and the supporting documentation was either only in the packet and there was nothing ahead of time. And I, you know, I go back to a presentation that was done by a school committee member about a year or so ago, and it really just had one line. Had no idea what to expect and it's kinda hard to prepare for that type of presentation when there's nothing on the agenda except for a single line. Maybe that was something different. I mean, that wasn't gonna be covered under this policy, but I thought we were talking about all materials in any presentation that was going to be done before the board.
Well, if I may just kinda interject here, tonight is a prime example of what we've got under 3B. It was a report by the DPW Director, Bill Coyle, on recreation fields maintained by DPW and Box Division. Yes, we did request that report, but he did give us a presentation. He gave us the information here and he was gonna discuss it. So I mean, he can't tell us every little bit and piece of what his report's gonna be when he gets here. So I don't know how we can develop a policy to say, "Well, you know what? We're gonna talk about fields and facilities and..." Well, I wanna know upstate, upfront, what we're gonna be talking about.
Let's back up the truck. You're, you're taking the ball and running off the end of the earth with it here for a second.
No, I don't think I've gone that far with it.
Mr. Coyle has always, anytime he's done a presentation here, he has always given us as much information as we wanted, if not more. His presentations have been excellent, they've been professional, and there's never a lack of information. I'm speaking to items that are put on, someone requests through the Chair to have an agenda item put on under presentations, and it's a single-line item with no description, and we don't know what it's gonna be until we get here.
Okay, well, then there's something like, if we have something like that, we can discuss it. We don't have to vote on it, we don't have to accept it, we don't have to do anything. We can table it to a following meeting and do that. So we do have an out there if we want to. I don't know if we have to develop a policy...
I'm just asking a question.
Okay. I don't think we have to develop a policy for that, but I understand your question.
All right.
Okay. Anything further on this, on the materials policy?
So I, I don't know if it, it requires a vote of the board, but...
I would, I would accept a motion on whether accept or reject on the recommendation by the Subcommittee.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Subcommittee.
Second. And that would be on the materials policy?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last one that I have is the entertainment policy, which is very, very involved, very complicated. As you know, we have a several-page draft policy for an indoor entertainment license, which, you know, in my mind, it was being more proactive because this, this particular indoor entertainment license would apply to, say, like a nightclub or some formal entertainment. And I believe it was, you know, it was drafted with things in mind like the Rhode Island tragedy. So we, we fully intend to bring that policy to the board again, but titled that "Indoor Entertainment Policy," and that would, that would be adopted and, as you can see in the policy, which we will see at a future meeting. Very specific criteria for entertainment, which we don't have right now, but, you know, if a club comes in and wants to have dancing and blah, 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 you know, whatever else they do, we wanna be sure that we have a policy in place before we grant them their licenses. And so that brings us to the outdoor entertainment, which we felt that couldn't be tied into an indoor entertainment policy because they're just completely different. They're just completely different, so why have one policy for two different issues? The outdoor entertainment policy, you know, we, we've, we've asked for some feedback from the department heads, but this is, you know, for outdoor bans at night, maybe put a restriction of 10:00 PM, look, look at the places. So, so we have actually had, had lots and lots of notes on this, but I just think that the, when we draft an outdoor entertainment policy, we need to be careful in what we do. So that's when we decided to ask for some input from the professionals that we have here in town, meaning the department heads. So we hope to have the outdoor entertainment policy to you, you know, soon, by the end of the summer. And the indoor, the indoor entertainment policy, I just wanna, I gave it to the Town Manager and not for tonight, but, you know, I wanted her to just review it, see if she has any issues or concerns with it. And so there's no action to take on that. That's all I have for that. And the last policy that we have is a request that came from, I believe, Mr. Carpenter, about recognizing volunteers and long-time board members, et cetera. So Mrs. Brotherton did the work on this, so if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Brotherton.
Would you please?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. I did a little bit of researching and came across that Congress has designated a week in May since 1985 for, as Public Service Recognition Week. So as I have drafted here, public servants, past and present, deserve our respect and appreciation throughout the year. appreciation throughout the year. We hope to continuing honoring them for their service and for many great challenges they tackle on behalf of every day in our hometown and community. Celebrated, as I said, the first week of May, the PSRW, Public Service Recognition Week, is organized annually by public employees and Roundtable and its member organizations to recognize our men and women who have served our community and those who continue to serve. What basically would happen is that we would send out an invitation, and our volunteers or current workers that need to be recognized would be acknowledged during this week, and it's already been set for May 1st through the 7th, 2016, for the annual celebration. And I would ask that you -- I apologize, it was not in your packet. I apologize. Would ask that my fellow peers on the board take a look at this, and hopefully we all agree on one week of recognition. Certainly with retirements, I may add, certainly with any type of retirements, any particular department can certainly honor their employee as they see fit.
Okay. Thank you. I think because we did receive this tonight, I think it's a great idea. I think it's something that we should recognize, those who have helped us out before, helped us out now. And it kind of gives us a little bit of impetus for new volunteers and people to come forward and help out. And I think that because we received this tonight, it's something for us to think about, and we can bring this back at a future meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But thank you.
And before we close out on this, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask if -- I don't believe there's anything else outstanding, but did more board members have anything else that they felt that was requested to the subcommittee?
That's what we discussed tonight, briefly. We'll take it up next.
Right. No, I'm talking about, did we cover all the outstanding requests that have come from the board? I believe we have.
I believe we have.
As far as I can recall, Madam Vice Chair, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We move on to item eight, Board of Select member items. And under 8A, we have a request for proclamation for Sue Wiegel by Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. As many of us know, Sue was serving as one of our registrars of voters, and because of a technical issue, she was not able to continue her service on that board. I'm not sure if this board, in any of its incarnation, have recognized Sue for her multitude of contributions to the town. So, in addition to her one-year service as a registrar, I would like us to recognize her tremendous service to the town in the form of a proclamation with people that she may have served with being invited. I know that's -- so, that's the reason for my request.
I've been had a chance to think about this, and I know that there was a -- there has to -- the Board of Registrars has to be a balanced board there. And I don't believe that Sue Wiegel is done with her service to the town. I think she's going to continue. I think she's going to have -- there's plenty of other things that she's been involved with over the past, and I think there'll be something that will interest her later. And I don't think that a proclamation at this point is ready for her. I think that she has some -- a lot more time, and I appreciate all the work that she's done. She's been involved in so many different projects around the town over the years, and I do know Sue, and she's very, very into all the projects she does. But I don't think we've seen the last of Sue Wiegel, and I'd hate to send along a proclamation now and just say, you know what? Thanks.
She's a town meeting member as well.
Yeah. And she has been a town meeting member as well, but I don't want to see her end her interest, and I think that if we give her a proclamation now, that I don't think -- that'll be kind of like, thank you, we're all set, and I would like to see her come back. So, I'm not quite sure I would be in support of this.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you. But I don't agree that we're kicking her out the door. We're recognizing probably too late her multiple services, and I would certainly encourage her to continue her service. I would ask anybody. Ms. Weston was given a proclamation last year. She's back serving. So, I don't think it's kicking anybody out the door. It's saying, thank you, and we appreciate your past service, and please continue.
Mrs. Goodrich.
So, I'm really torn here, because certainly I'm not going to vote against a proclamation for Sue Wiegel. I think she's done a lot, but I agree with Mr. Holstrom that she's, you know, she has a lot of service to come. And I would prefer to send her a letter of thanks for her service as a registrar right now. Send her a letter and also acknowledge, you know, her commitment to the community. But I'm just, I get concerned with this, and certainly Ms. Weston, that was, you know, a quarter century on a board and well-deserved recognition. I just, I'm concerned that we're going to leave someone out and have someone say, well, why did Sue Wiegel get, you know, a proclamation for, although I agree with you that it's many years of service, when she finished one year on the Board of Registrars? So, I don't know. I'm not going to vote against proclamation if that's the board's wish, but I would prefer to send a letter of thanks and appreciation for her service as a registrar and her commitment to her community, and, again, you know, recognize her potentially at our May recognition.
Mr. Chairman, if nobody else has anything, why don't we table this to the next meeting? I'd like to think on what Mrs. Goodrich has offered as a compromise and appreciate her feedback.
That's great. Mr. Simonian.
Well, just one comment before we table it. If it is the wish of the board to send a letter, then I would recommend that if we do go that route, then why just send a letter thanking her at the interruption, as Mr. Carpenter put it, I'm paraphrasing what he said, of just this one thing being on the registrar, then the letter should encapsulate everything. I know that in several conversations I had with Mr. Ethier, there was a time she was part of the historical committee, and he continuously praised, and I know there's been other things, that's just one of many. So, I would, if we do go the route of sending the letter, then let's just encapsulate all of it in the letter and not just limit it to the one specific, hey, we, you know, we realized there was an interruption in the services registrar, and we're acknowledging one thing, let's acknowledge it all, if that's the route we choose. But I'm all for, if you, Mr. Carpenter brought it up to us, if he wants to table it, I'm fine with that.
Mrs. Goodrich.
So, I'll just want to make one more comment. I appreciate your willingness to table it, and, again, consider, as you're considering this, look into the information that Mrs. Brotherton provided for public service recognition, and, you know, consider recognizing her in May for all of her contributions. And I believe she's still a town meeting member.
I don't believe she is.
Okay. So, we just, we need to get, but most recently, I mean, she kind of got bumped from being a registrar, which she had just started.
Yes.
So, I certainly want to recognize that, but I appreciate your willingness to table it and kind of think about it, and we'll discuss it again.
Okay. And, excuse me, Mr. Carpenter, I would like to, at this point, because of, we're talking about proclamations for an individual, I think at some point I'd like to send, and we will bring it back to the board for our next meeting, but we should have some sort of a policy for drafting proclamations. I know that the Chamber of Commerce has developed, you know, well, they have developed, but they've requested many proclamations for different businesses they've been dealing with. We have proclamations for individuals that have done great things for the town of Auburn or longtime service and what have you. But I think right now, I think that the proclamations have almost gotten out of hand. We're sending a lot of proclamations for a lot of different things, and I think maybe it's something we want to take a look at. I don't want to, you know, miss anybody, but I do want to say that, you know what? Maybe a policy should be in place instead of, you know, send a letter instead of a proclamation. But I think a policy for down the road, I think it's something we should be thinking about. Mr. Simonian.
Well, Dan touched on this a little bit earlier, so might as well go back around. If that's the case, if we're going to look at a policy for how we're going to do this, then I think there should be potentially a separate, something separate for businesses versus residents who serve the town, if you want to distinguish that service. Maybe it's not a proclamation, because if you're giving that to a business, then maybe it's not, you know, it kind of loses its message when it's given to an individual or vice versa. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. But if we're going to, if we're going to look at a policy on how to do this, then maybe there's, you know, different categories, you know, and you served for 10 years, this is how we recognize you. You served for 25 years, this is how we're going to recognize you. You're a brand-new business. Hey, we're so grateful that you chose Auburn over everyone else. Here's how we're going to recognize that. But as Dan said, and I guess it was just myself and Mrs. Goodrich at the time, when masterminds had their 50th anniversary, granted, all those 50 weren't in Auburn, but 50 years as a business is a monster accomplishment. And that, I don't want to take away from what the town did, and because it was a wonderful ceremony, masterminds were so appreciative, and they've been such a great part of the community, but maybe we could have done something more than a proclamation. So, Dan brought that up. If we're going to go that, if we're going to go down that road, then let's just look at all those different things.
Again, develop a policy that we can do that, and I think that's for something for discussion for down the road, and we can define what we want to do as a board. Now, we've got a, by Mr. Carpenter, request, letter to Bay Path School in recognition of their achievements at Skills USA competition.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes. They did a bang-up job. I happened to see it in the paper, and I know we've taken the time to recognize all of our schools and our athletes and our achievers. So, I thought it would be appropriate for our other high school in town that we at least send a letter to the school committee and administration and just offer our recognition and congratulations for their tremendous achievement.
Well, I think that's definitely a good thing, but personally, I'm not familiar with this recognition of their achievements. I'm not sure what it is. If you could maybe possibly draft a letter, get us some information, we'd put that together and send it from the board, that would be great. Again, personally, I didn't get that information. I don't know exactly what this entails, because I'm not that familiar with it. So, if you, instead of, you know, having Sharon, she's got a boatload of work as it is, if you could draft some type of a letter or some sort of information that we could put together and send from the board, that would be something that would be greatly appreciated.
Well, I'm not expecting detail in letter. It's simply acknowledging their achievements at Skills USA, which is a competition that they take vocationally. They did extremely well. I know we've had conversations about this. If people have questions about items, they can certainly call me, my phone number, and it does work, so that we're not wandering around in the dark. I would do it for any other board member. If I had a question about something that any of you had, I would do it before the meeting. I wouldn't do it at the meeting. So, I'm going to make a motion that we send a simple letter to the Bay Path School Committee and Administration, recognizing their achievements at Skills, and leave it at that.
Okay. Motion's been made. Mr. Goodrich.
I just have a question. So, it's going to the school committee and to, when you say Administration, is that Superintendent LaFlesch?
Superintendent. Yes.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It's a vote. And we will see if we can get some information and find out exactly, but to maybe just kind of, you know, we understand a little bit more about what the full achievements were at the Skills USA competition. Okay. Public comments? I guess we're all set with that for tonight. Mrs. Goodrich.
I just, just because there's been a couple motions made tonight, and I know it's not on the agenda, but one thing I'm having difficulty following, like, a motion should be very clear and specific, like, for Sharon to write down, like, I make a motion to send this to the subcommittee. And I'm just finding that, like, I'm trying to figure out what we're voting on, and there's a lot of extra language in motion. So, I just ask that members be very clear with their motion and quite possibly read it back before we vote, because the commentary should come, not while you're making the motion, but after the motion.
Okay.
It's just, I just want to be very clear what I'm voting on. Thank you.
Appreciate that comment. I do have one more thing, and then I will get to Ms. Jacobson. Yeah, it has been raised again tonight. We were talking about signatures on proclamations, signatures on our payroll. And the payroll deeks through 90% of the time with three signatures. And it is our responsibility as Board of Selectmen to review this payroll and sign it. We can't go line item by line item and identify it, but we want to be sure that, you know, we've seen it, we understand what it is, and it's our responsibility to sign that. So, please, make every effort to get up to the town hall. Sharon does send it out, and when she's away, then Sue Struzina will send out an email and say, it's ready, so please come up and sign. And it takes all of 10 minutes, if you come up and say hello, to take a look through and just sign it off. And it is our responsibility, so please, make every effort to get up here. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. Thank you. I did receive an email from the fire chief that I just want to share with the board. I can also send it to you, but I believe it's open to the public as well, so I just wanted to read the email to you. And it's regarding an open house for Captain Eric Otten, who's retiring. The Fire Rescue Department will be hosting an open house for Captain Eric Otten this Friday, the 31st, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the fire headquarters on Auburn Street. Please stop by and say goodbye to Captain Otten as he retires after 16 years with the Fire Department. Any questions, please let the chief know. So, I wanted to share that and just make a note of it for the public that just came in this morning. So, I will get that to you. It wasn't on the agenda, because I didn't have it when the agenda was done, but it's definitely something that I know the fire chief wanted to extend to the Board of Selectmen. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And last on the agenda for this evening, we have minutes from December 8th, 2014, and also from December 22nd, 2014. Has anybody got any comments, questions, corrections? If not, I'll accept them as presented. And on that note, a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.